So the meeting tonight is held in person, of course, here at Benton Harbor High School Library. There is currently a remote viewing option through Zoom as listed below. And there are people that are tuning in live with us currently, so just wanted to let those that are in attendance know that others are tuning in live. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. This meeting is in-person, is an in-person meeting with the option to view the live meeting by clicking on the Zoom link listed above. Questions may be submitted beforehand to Liz.Goodwin@BHAS.org or presented in person during the public comment section as indicated in the agenda. Board members may be contacted through the emails listed below. Upon prior request to the superintendent, the district shall make reasonable accommodation for a person with disabilities to be able to view the meeting. Requests for special assistance may be sent to Liz.Goodwin@BHAS.org. I call this meeting to order officially at 5:35 PM. We will begin by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
President Robinson. Vice President Bradley.
President.
Secretary Triplet, President Treasurer Creighton. Trustee Bowen.
President.
Trustee Buchanan. And Trustee Rocket Martin.
President.
We have a call.
All right, it has been confirmed that we have a call. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Our agenda today, of course, is a hard copy in the front of you in your board package. For those that are in the audience, if you'd like a copy of the agenda, they are at the table at the entrance. I'll give everyone an opportunity to review. And then when ready, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
All right, so the motion has been made by Vice President Bradley. Is there a second or support?
I support.
The motion has been made by Vice President Bradley and supported by Trustee Rocket Martin. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the current agenda? All right, you're, go ahead.
Madam President, if I wanted to add. Sorry, I apologize, we ain't virtually no more. If I wanted to add something on the resolution, I missed that mark, correct? Or could we amend the resolution? I mean, the agenda?
What would?
Or add?
What was the particular item?
Um, I guess it would go under Personnel. Um, we received something two weeks ago or three weeks ago in our email. It's been hitting social media, we're getting Facebook messages and all, it's, I guess also would go into Culture and Climate. Um, it would be an investigation into our Culture and Climate with Human Resources.
Okay, so you're saying you wanted to, you want to add that to the agenda as a discussion topic for tonight, or?
Yes, I, I think it would be naive and unjust for us not to let the public know that we are aware of their concerns.
Okay, so what Trustee Bowen, he's asking a question, is he wanting to add to the agenda a conversation regarding finance and culture?
Yes.
And when is it, where is it that you're wanting to add that?
Under Human Resources. Would that be under? Be under Board Discussion, sir. Yes. So I guess we would put it under New Business.
It would technically be New Business because it's not anything that we brought. So it's, so Trustee Bowen, some clarification for you when I get to New Business, but that's a discussion topic that you want to, to add at that particular time?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or concerns regarding the agenda? All right, Secretary Triplet, can you please call the role for approval of the agenda as it stands?
President Robinson.
Yes.
Vice President Bradley.
Yes.
Secretary Triplet, yes. Treasurer Creighton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowen.
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan.
I guess I'm gonna say, yeah.
Trustee Rocket Martin.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, so approval of the agenda has passed. Next on the agenda, we have review of our board norms. They are laminated. For those who have tuned in virtually at the start of our meeting, so will continue to do so now that we are in person. These norms guide how we interact with each other, how we interact with the community, but they also guide our expectations for how the community will interact with us. So the Board of Education norms, Benton Harbor area schools, we will treat each other with respect, we will listen to learn, we will retain inside conversations. We will use our time wisely starting and ending our meetings on time, we will challenge ideas, not people, we will ask questions when in doubt, there will be no surprises at the board table. We will practice the seven norms of collaboration. And our seven norms are on the back, they are causing, paraphrasing, posing questions, putting ideas on the table, providing data, paying attention to self and others, and presuming positive in and of. All right. Next on the agenda is an area for public comment. Liz, if you could get that statement geared up for me. All right, the Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. Today, there are two areas for comment on the agenda, of which you may decide when to speak. Public comment on agenda items, which is where we are now, and open public comment, which is later in the agenda. Per policy 0167.3, which governs board participation at board meetings, we request that you process your comments by completing the public participation form with your name, address, email, and group affiliation when appropriate. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to a three-minute duration, and per our bylaw, no participant may speak more than once during this meeting. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. The board will listen, take comments and questions under advisement, and not respond at this time. I, as President, will refer questions to the superintendent for research and response. If you have specific questions for the board or executive team that require follow-up, please email those directly to Liz.Goodwin@BHAS.org. Is there anyone that is present who would like to make a public comment on agenda items? Okay, I'll ask one last time, is there anyone present that would like to make a public comment on agenda items? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed with our agenda. Next on the agenda is approval of our meeting minutes. We've had quite a few meetings in the month of June. I just want to say I thank you all for all of your efforts that you've given, it probably felt like the month did not end. Today, we are approving meeting minutes for work session 6-1, 2021, special session 6-5, 2021, closed session 6-5, 2021, regular session 6-8, 2021, special session 6-22, 2021, and special session 6-25, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes as reflected?
Some move.
The motion has been made by Secretary Triplet, is there a second or support?
Support.
The motion has been made by Secretary Triplet and supported by Vice President Bradley that we approve the meeting minutes for 6-1, 6-5, 6-5, closed, 6-8, 6-22, and 6-25. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the board? Hearing none, Secretary Triplet, can you please call the role for approval of the meeting minutes?
President Robinson.
Yes.
Vice President Bradley.
Yes.
Secretary Triplet, yes. Treasurer Creighton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowen.
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan.
Yes.
Trustee Rocket Martin.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, awesome, approval of the minutes for 6-1, 6-5, 6-5, closed, 6-8, 6-22, 6-25 passed. Next on the agenda, under Board Business, we have our committee reports. We are going to start with Finance, Treasurer Creighton, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. Um, we had our finance meeting on June 30th, um, it was a rescheduled meeting, this was a conflict. Um, we had a very brief meeting. Um, we discussed our finance reports from May and also some end-of-the-year reports. Um, we also discussed P-Cards and P-Card limits.
Get the mic.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we, um, had a finance committee, um, committee meeting on June the 30th, um, there was a rescheduled meeting. And we discussed our finance reports from May and also some, um, business that we needed to finish up for June. Um, we also discussed our P-Cards and P-Card limits. And, um, we had a really good discussion and team-building, um, activity, um, I thought it was a really good meeting where we just kind of talked about some things that could help us as a finance committee, some things that our, um, chief of finance was working on, and then moving forward to things that we could do to make the public aware of some financial things that we've talked about and that's going on. Um, and so I thought we had a really good meeting and, um, that was pretty much my financing portion.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns for Treasurer Creighton regarding her finance report? And the things that were discussed in our meeting are actually under Mr. Johnson's section of the agenda as well. All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to the Human Resources Report, Treasurer Creighton.
Yeah, so we, um, also had a Human Resource Committee meeting on June 23rd. Um, it was a really good meeting, um, probably one of our best committee meetings that we've had. Um, we talked about some things, um, from an HR perspective that the board wanted more information on, and I think it's been some hot topics in HR for the last couple of months, and so we were, we were able to talk about some things and to get some clarity on some things. Um, we also had that special meeting, um, shortly after to hire, um, some new staff to fill some of the vacancies that we have within the district. Um, we also, um, worked on the packets for HR, um, to extend contracts of, um, several of our administrators and employees. And so, um, that's pretty much what we talked about. And, um, also, we're encouraging the public, if you, um, see jobs that are posted and they qualify for, um, please apply. We do have, um, some vacancies that we're looking to fill, and so we welcome everyone, uh, with the credentials and qualifications to please apply. Um, we're looking for individuals in the community, um, that are qualified, that can fill some of our positions that we have open. And that's the conclusion of my finance, uh, I'm sorry, HR report.
Thank you, Treasurer Creighton, I appreciate you. Any questions, comments, or concerns from, uh, the board regarding the Human Resources Committee Report? Hearing none, we'll proceed to Mr. Bradley, Vice President Bradley.
Um, we did not have a Facilities Committee meeting this past month due to the, um, budget hearing, and we had a limited agenda. But we do know we have, um, something that we need to discuss, and we're going to be bringing it, um, to our, um, Facilities Committee meeting, uh, this coming month.
All right, thank you, Vice President Bradley. Next, we have Secretary Triplet with curriculum.
Madam President, I purposefully did not attend the curriculum, um, and instruction meeting. Um, for the reason that I am looking forward, first of all, to, um, the meeting that we've got scheduled for the Board of Education. Um, um, on July the 15th. I, yeah, for committee, committee structures, um, for the last six months, I have sat in those committee meetings. And just my personal feeling, um, just a bunch of, to me. So, um, I chose not to attend that meeting until we find out how that committee structure will be moving forward. Um, but, um, Ms. Rocket, Trustee Rocket was there, and she can give you, uh, what they discussed. And I will not be attending until we get that final live on July 15th.
Yes, uh, the curriculum meeting was, uh, June 29th. We started on time and we ended on time. So, um, we did a review of my norms and then, uh, the Special Air Department gave a report. They have two new classrooms coming to the high school, one for emotionally impaired and one for autistic children coming to the high school, uh, which everybody's happy about, uh, to continue that from middle school, from elementary and middle school. Also, um, they have now, I believe, every building will have a restorative justice person in place so that we can use that as means of, um, deterring, uh, suspensions and, you know, uh, a different kind of discipline for students, uh, so that we could get on with the business of learning and students not having to be put out of school. And, um, and, you know, and that's what we want. We also have, um, a report from Graduation Alliance. I believe at the time that we were having our committee meeting, uh, you have about four or five students lined up to be a part of that program. Residency was, is not an issue, I was told. So, uh, if you all know of anybody, I could just put in a plug here, of students who are not in school, who, um, you know, doesn't necessarily want the traditional high school classroom type thing, uh, please refer them to the Graduation Alliance program. Uh, I've talked to a few students who, um, Dr. Shelton was able to give me, uh, information of who to contact, Mr. Perkins, so that we can get those students lined up and ready to go. Also, um, we did talk about summer school as of then, they had about 200 students signed up for summer school. I don't know if that number has gone up or down, but that was impressive, uh, to start even summer school. And so, um, Madam President, that is our, that is my report.
Awesome, thank you so much, uh, Trustee Rocket Martin, for providing that update for us for curriculum. And there was something that you spoke about, I just wanted to comment on, you mentioned Graduation Alliance, and this is just a regular tangent in response to what you stated. I do have a relative that did not graduate high school, and so when I was telling her about Graduation Alliance, she actually told me that they had already reached out to her and had already initiated that process, so I was excited to actually see that when we voted in approval of, it's actually, um, that they are actually hitting the, the ground running, so I just wanted to add that comment. And then additionally, uh, Secretary Triplet mentioned it, but our committee training is Thursday, the 15th, and it's going to be here in person. Um, we are meeting with Ms. Makin', and the items that we are discussing will be roles and responsibilities of the governance team, team unity and norms, building and sustaining team and team respect, and proactive behavior change. Also, I wanted her the initial questions that you all gave at our board retreat. So she has actually tailored the training specifically to our needs and our concerns, so that is scheduled for the 15th in person at 5:30. And she's coming in person to meet with us so we can have an effective meeting. You have a question?
Yes, Madam President, on the Graduation Alliance program, when the, when it was presented to us as a Board of Education, um, it was also requested that we received, uh, review and a presentation, an introduction by the Graduation Alliance, um, whoever they are. And so that has not taken place as of yet, and I would like to make sure that we keep that on the radar so that we can get clarification as to what it is that they actually are doing so that we will know and be able to make, um, the necessary, uh, ask the necessary questions so that we are all on the same page and no one is assuming anything. So I'm looking forward to that as well. And, um, again, like I said, I did not attend the meeting, I'm looking forward to our meeting this Thursday um, because I do have some concerns and questions as it relates to, uh, summer school, the start of summer school. And so we'll be able to talk about those things more in detail after that. Thank you so very much.
Are there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the Curriculum Committee? And I apologize, I jumped ahead of everyone with my comment.
Um, I just wanted to say that the, uh, uh, it's good to hear that we have autism education coming up to our high school because, um, you know, um, I have a brother that's autistic and we weren't able to have him attend Benton Harbor area schools because we didn't have those programs when he wasn't school. So I'm glad to see that that's coming here, so, uh, good job to our team.
All right, thank you, Vice President Bradley. Any other questions, comments, or concerns from the board regarding the Curriculum Special Ed, Education Committee Report or any of the committee reports? All right, hearing none, next on the agenda, we have Dr. Townsend is going to take the floor, and he is beginning with the Care Accounts program.
Yes, thank you so much, um, can you come to the podium? Um, so I had an opportunity to meet with, um, some stakeholders from, um, our organization, Whirlpool, who also supports with mentoring in our programs. And they mentioned to me a program, um, that is successful across the country called Care Accounts. Um, and, and gist of it, I'm gonna let Ms. Fletty share the bulk of it. Um, but to what I understand of it, and we saw this in DC public schools where I served as an administrator, and I know a gentleman by the name of Principal Ra who does this on a national level in New Jersey. Uh, they introduced washer and dryers to the school with a goal and hopes of supporting the whole child. When we talk about climate, culture, and social and emotional learning, when we talk about restorative practices and multi-tiered system of support, any amount of support is very successful for our young people, and I'm looking to bring in as much success as possible for our kids to meet whatever their needs are, not only academic, behavioral, social, and emotionally, but also with the families, developing that family human, uh, family resource, uh, for our communities. So I will turn the microphone over to Ms. Laura Fletty. And, uh, before, I don't want to make decisions on behalf of, behalf of the district without understanding where, where the board stands or what they think would be a good opportunity for our kids. Uh, so my goal is to, um, collaborate with the board and let you know, hey, I learned something new, tell me what you think about it, whether good or bad, so I can make an informed decision whether to move forward or not. So with that being said, I turn the microphone over.
Hello, board, thank you so much for letting me come in today, it's an honor to be able to talk to you about this program. Um, I already talked quietly probably, so. Hello, thank you so much for the opportunity to review Care Accounts laundry program with you all. Um, it's been wonderful getting to know Dr. Townsend and bringing him along on the journey. Before I dive in, I was hoping that, um, I could actually have one of the other administrators that we partner with give you a little bit of a testimonial of what the program looks like in their school and how it's kind of helped them, and then we can dive into the details. So, uh, Ms. Goodwin, if you don't mind playing that next video, that would be wonderful. Oh, no, well, it will be in the presentation and you can review at your leisure later if you'd like. Um, so I failed to introduce myself, my name is Laura Fletty, I lead brand communications over at Whirlpool Corporation. Um, and Care Accounts is just one of the projects that my team leads and works on. Um, I came today because I wanted to give you an overview of the program and kind of talk a little bit about our history with Benton Harbor and where we'd like to offer our services if there's any of interest moving forward. Um, Ms. Goodwin, do you mind moving forward two slides, I think? Sorry, I'll be pinging you for all of those. Yeah, there's a video in here, but if we don't have audio, I don't know that it'll be, there you go. So if we start with the history, if you don't mind moving forward one more slide for me. Back in 2015, a letter came across the desk at the corporation, and it was a simple request from a teacher in St. Louis. And she said, do you mind sending us a washer and a dryer? Because we have a number of kids that could really use a laundry unit being accessible to them. And not thinking much of the request, we said, okay, yeah, we can spare a washer dryer, we'll send one. Could you just tell us like how it's impacting your school once you get it, because we'd like to understand this a little bit more? And, uh, approximately like six weeks later, she came back to us and she said, my word, you would have no idea how much of an impact this has made. We are seeing attendance rates for children that are chronically absent completely going away, kids are in school every day. As a result, they're learning more and they're participating more in the classroom. And as a group, we thought, well, this is incredibly interesting and we should probably dig into it a little bit more. So we partnered with a developmental psychologist, a childhood developmental psychologist, and we said, could you do a little bit more research into this? And tell us if this was just a one-off with this particular school or if there's something more here. And he did, um, quite a bit of extensive research, and he came back and, um, Ms. Goodwin, if you could flip forward one slide for me. He said, it turns out that teachers are estimating that one in five children lacks access to clean clothing. And I think we were pretty shocked, just to be perfectly candid, I, something we take for granted, especially at Whirlpool where we all have washers and dryers for the people who are within those walls, they're pretty common for us to see. So we didn't really realize this impact, and we said, well, that's, you know, that's crazy, tell us more. And he said, you know, when you start to think about the ongoing ramifications of that, it's astronomical. Because when the child misses school, they're missing their classroom education time. When they miss their ed, classroom education time, then they're not doing as well as tasks, on tasks. And it continues to compound, and it continues to compound, and ultimately, it leads to the likelihood that they're seven times more likely to drop out of school altogether. And so when, um, we heard that, we said, well, we're not teachers, we're not administrators, but we have a lot of washers, we have a lot of dryers. So, um, what we ended up doing, Liz, if you don't mind moving forward for me, sorry, was, um, we said, we are going to put our energy and make a commitment that we're going to try to do what we can to stop kids from missing school just because they don't have access to laundry. There's not a whole lot that me in marketing can do in order to help kids, but this is one thing that I feel very passionately about that I can do. I can send a washer and a dryer into a school, I can make sure that they have the fabric softener, the detergent, the necessities to at least have the resource available to the families if they want to take advantage of it. So with that, we launched the program, and, um, in two slides, I can show you a little bit of the results. So within a few years, if you don't mind popping forward for me, yep. What we have found is that as a result of students having been exposed to the Care Accounts program, they are 18 ti, or they receive 18 more days of education on average per year. So that's roughly, what, three and a half weeks? I'm not in the educational system, I don't understand all of the nuances, but I know that that's almost a whole month of education, and I know how much my kids learn in a month, and that's a lot of school. Um, as a result, in the first year, chronic absenteeism, they see 90% attendance rates happen. In year two, they see 87% attendance rate, so it's not just year one, it continues to compound into year two, which note, shows that we have this ongoing benefit that will lead them from just third grade all the way up to sixth grade and beyond. Um, and then 50% of them are not only able to catch up with where they're supposed to be at their reading level, but go beyond their reading level. So we're really making a market improvement on improving their overall education and their future and, and their opportunities. So you can tell I'm very passionate about it, but, um, the reason I came here today is, uh, I wanted to kind of touch base and share with you guys where we've been in terms of partnering with Benton Harbor schools, because we're all here together. And, um, you know, we want to make sure that we're doing our part to help this community thrive. So, um, Ms. Goodwin, if you don't mind going forward two slides for me, this is kind of an overview of where we've been. So I'm not sure the specific dates, but you'll see that in the past, we have delivered washers and dryers to, I believe, four schools. I know that there's been changes in the schools. I imagine that many of those units are in disrepair, they haven't been receiving, you know, being utilized the way that they ought to be. I'm here today to offer to provide units for all the schools, we usually only do Care Accounts within elementary schools because of it being like the real great location to be able to, um, not only get families in, but those are, kids are the ones who have the greatest in, potential impact from the program. But we'd like to make sure that this goes through the entire community, so we want to bring them to all the schools, if you guys will accept them. Um, we'll provide delivery, installation, service, and/or replacement for up to five years from the date that the product is delivered and installed. And then I will make sure that with, through our partnership, you guys will have all the accoutrements that are new to, needed in order to do the laundry for the children. So that's laundry bags, that's laundry detergent, fabric softener, so on and so forth. We just keep a ongoing conversation, when you need it, we'll ship it, you'll be good to go, and so all of it is at no cost and no expectations. So that's what I'm here to talk about today, and happy to take any questions or comments you guys might have.
Can I add? And I'll be done. So what I found out is, uh, when meeting with Whirlpool, that they were in our schools in the past, the program was never implemented. Um, so the washer and dryers in some cases were not hooked up, um, and, you know, I think it was turned over at the leadership level. Um, so I said, well, okay, well, let. Um so I said, well, okay, let's make it right. You know, let's see. If the board supported, I support it. I mean, I support it off rip, but I want poke holes, ask any question, maybe some historical knowledge here about care accounts in the past uh to help it be a good thing for our kids. I know it'll be effective based on my experiences in the past, uh but I would love to know what our board thinks.
All right. So thank you to Laura.
Yes, please. Yeah, I I'm not a Mrs. Fletty. That's a little too horrible for me.
For putting this presentation on the agenda for the board this evening, I will hit and open the floor up to the board if there are any questions that you all have regarding uh Care Account.
I don't really have a question, but first of all, I'd like to say thank you um from the bottom of my heart for you thinking about us. Having taught school for years, there's a a young man in particular um who just recently passed maybe a year ago. He was in my fifth grade class about twenty-five years ago. He was very, very bright. But his clothes were always dirty and uh he 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 wanted to raise his hand, but he did not want to bring attention to himself. And so it created a lot of, you know, problems and 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 then he became what teachers would say a discipline problem. But had we had something like this, to be able to take that away, you know, to be able to bring clothes in and 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 depending on how it's used through the administration and through teachers and from a leadership perspective and and our kids being able to say, hey, listen, and not feel bad about it, you know, and I I have heard students say, well, I couldn't come to school because my mother couldn't couldn't go to the laundromat this week, and I did not have anything to wear. So I think this is absolutely amazing. I've lived it. I've witnessed it. I've seen it, and I am looking forward to um our superintendent, if the board, you know, goes with it, um making sure that we have things in place to be able to document so that we can have the same data two years out. And 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 it because it definitely does build character. But thank you so much.
Yes.
And that those who uh said that this is something that we want to do from from Whirlpool, tell them thank you so very much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it so much.
I truly remember um Whirlpool running washers and dryers. Not only that, it gave us refrigerators and microwaves. I remember that.
Yes.
And I know that especially during the times when uh our schools were wearing uniforms, they were even really handy. Uh I believe some schools were, they were using.
Yeah.
They were using. One of the things that we did hear was the teachers were saying, who's going to do the washing? Who's going to take, who's going to do all this extra work? But they were certainly handy. And I too remember um students who came to school during, but we also kept our clothes closet so we could change clothes before they got to their classrooms, you know, and and as a principal and as a uh and my, you know, my colleagues, we washed them. I just took them home and washed them and brought them back to school, you know, so they could change clothes every day if they needed to. But this certainly would help them, I'm sure, and uh you may get that question to him, like, who's going to wash it?
And with
But it's something certainly that uh I'm sure people, you know, will take into heart and volunteer.
Well, that was what I was gonna say is we we've stood this up, obviously, a hundred and twenty-four plus schools. So we've had a few reps, and what we found is that you can either recruit parents. I've heard of one. One of my favorite stories is we have a school who's turned their laundry room into a family lounge, and parents come in and they give them wifi, and then the parents can work on their resumes, or if they have to, you know, pay bills or do something online, they have a space where they can do it. It's bright and cheerful and well-lit and and private, so that they have some privacy. Um but it creates kind of a an outreach program as well for the community.
The other thing I would like to say is when you work with a parent on this, be very careful because parents don't want you to do that. They're not doing their job. And so we have that's a really special um way of talking to them and letting them know, we're we're just helping. You know, it's not that you're not doing what you're supposed to. You may be busy, you may be working, you know, and you and kids at the time, when they were wearing those uniforms, they would wear them every day and uh inside out, back and front, just, you know, be very showing, but you know, just kind of let them know that you may not have a washer in your home and the laundromat is expensive, but we're here to help you and to aid you. And so, you know, don't take it as a personal, you know, we're saying that you're not capable of taking care of your kids, because you will run into them. You will. So you have to be careful how you sell this to the parents.
All right. Thank you, trustee Rocket Martin and uh secretary Triplett for your comments. Any other questions or comments or feedback from the board?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you. Um as a life skills teacher, I think this is a great life skill to even bring into the school. Um we don't really have life skills um being taught much anymore, but I think it's great. Um I think it'll be a great way. Um as a former life skills teacher, I was always, I did have one in Benton Harbor High School um that you guys donated and we did use it. Um so I'm thankful for that. Um I have the experience actually using the um machines that you guys gave us, and um I think it's great to have in the schools if you have children that, you know, will need to wash things and um, you know, as you build a rapport with them, I think it's a great tool. And I just want to say thank you. Um I can see your passion. Um I just thank you for, you know, thinking about us um and being willing to put yourself out there to create this partnership. So thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Any other questions, comments, or feedback?
I was just gonna say, it sounds like it would be a very good program and like they will be a good um self-esteem booster, you know, for a lot of students that come in. Sometimes, you know, one day, kids may fall down a playground and they have an emergency situation. It's good to know that they have that infrastructure to play in schools for them.
Absolutely. Yep.
Madam President, um I would say, um I remember, sorry, I remember back in the day when Whirlpool was rolling this out. We were like, oh, Lord, here it goes again. Um at work, we were gonna be bombarded with schools, trying to help schools and everything. Um what do we do? How do we handle it? So I'm excited to see care is showing that you care. And to see that Whirlpool is not just talking, saying that we care, but actually doing something is powerful. It sheds some of the talk that we often hear in our community. Um so I hope this partnership is a great thing. I'm glad to see other schools and updated machines and everything are going on, and I look forward to seeing some of the results from it. That's all I would say.
Thank you, trustee uh Bond. Would you have a fourth, secretary Triplett?
Yes, um in the back um of a high school uh for athletic division and what do you have, there is a washroom. And uh would that include updating those? Some of those machines are are old and and outdated. I don't know if they've made some adjustments right now, but would that be something that you all could look into as well?
I I think once we have the approvals, the intent is that we'll just partner with the right facilities people to determine what your needs are, and our goal is to start working right away to get them solved.
I'll say yes, because, you know, it it was in elementary previously, and I said, I need the old district cover. So we gonna take care of the high school and our middle school as well. That's my ass.
Yeah, yeah.
And I I I believe they'll deliver that for us. And I do want to share this a little bit too. Um the leader in the country that sells this program as far as the district that people talk to to say, hey, is this something we should pursue is a school district, I think, in New York? And I'm like, okay, we're in the backyard of Whirlpool headquarters. We need to be that flagship Care Account program, show how effective it is with the demographic that we serve, so we can so so we can be the leader of supporting young people not only across the state, but potentially across the region, across our country with this program in thirty states, a hundred and twenty cities, and we should be the flagship if we're in our backyard. So I think this is a great opportunity. I look forward to it. I appreciate the feedback uh for my board members and um I'm looking forward to updating you guys on next steps.
I would like to thank you also for coming.
Thank you very much. I I appreciate the invite. Thank you for the warm reception. This was awesome. Um and I look forward to partnering on what's next.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Townsend, you still have a floor. Next, we have selection of a strategic planning firm.
Thank you so much. Um so next steps for us, I know in our previous board, uh regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting, we approved that we will look uh that we are going to select a firm to support us with regards to strategic planning. Um and um the reason for board approval is that the district needs to pursue a long-term vision by achieving academic and financial stability for the district and a sustainable and stable platform for growth that will ensure the district's integrity in a manner that enables it to grow, prosper, and thrive. The assistance of an outtime firm is integral to its ability to pursue this process and set goals in a comprehensive and unbiased manner. Fact and analysis, three separate firms, M A S B, Michigan Association of School Board, Communication by Design, which is CBD, and Hazard Young and Attia have presented their prospective programs to the board in the months of April and May. The request is that the board choose a firm to assist in the process of creating and implementing a strategic plan. There is no policy reference. The recommended action is that the Benton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education votes to approve a specific firm to assist in the creation of a plan.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Townsend. So as stated, the board has had the privilege of having presentations by the three firms listed. We've had discussions multiple times about our firms preference. At this particular time, I am uh opening up the floor. If there's any particular board member that has a form, a firm that they would like to suggest, we can start there and see if the board supports.
I I uh I would like to uh support M A S B. I think that we have um the majority of what we need, some stability, some consistency. Our superintendent is in a program that is led by M A S B. Many of us are getting our certifications and have um done some work with M A S B through classes and what have you. And um I think that they would probably be something so we can have some consistency, you know, even if it's just, you know, for the beginning to start this work. Um I think that from my experience, they're not, as I shared before, they present things to um to board members, but when they present those things, they don't present them like that's the only way. And I think that they have done it um in Michigan schools, um have done a lot of work in Michigan schools that look um like our school district. I think that they are very, very versed as it relates to the changes with state law, Michigan law, um what's happening, you know, um as it relates to public education. And so I think they would really, really be helpful in basically leading this work, and I think that they have the skills that and the tools, um um the bandwidth to be able to engage this, because this this process is going to include and and require the community in this entire. So I feel very comfortable with um M A S B.
All right.
Thank you.
And I will add to that. I don't know if you guys have noticed, I normally do not provide my opinion at the start of a conversation. I allow you guys to say how you feel. I normally reiterate what I've heard from both sides, because I am the voice of the board, even when the board has differing opinions. But in this particular instance, I would like to just step up and agree with secretary Triplett that I support M A S B as well. Uh for all of the reasons that he listed, but also because we are a majority for, they have guided a lot of our training for us. We have familiarity with them, reaching out and asking for case for clarifying questions on policies and things as it relates to how we how we move forward as a board. And so I think it would just be make a lot of sense for us in already having that developed relationship with them, that we utilize their services. I think they are, we'd be very familiar with our board, given those previous trainings that we participated in and the communication that we've had prior. So that's my thought.
Madam President?
Yes, you have the floor.
I would like to make a motion to hire M S A B um to do our strategic plan.
All right. Is there a second?
The board.
All right. So currently, as it stands, we have our staff report S line, and we have M A S B listed that was supported by uh trustee account, if I'm not mistaken. So I am gonna ask um for a motion to actually approve staff report S one with M A S B reflected.
I make a motion to approve uh staff report S one with M A S B reflected.
All right. And that has been supported by treasurer Creighton. So the motion has been made to approve staffer for S one with the selected firm located as M A S B by Vice President Bradley and supported by treasurer Creighton. Any other questions, comments, or concerns, input from the board?
Well, I was just gonna say, I I do agree with secretary Triplett. Treasurer Creighton. Uh M A S B, since I've been on the board um for these few years, they've always had a lot of training, a lot of input um when they do facilitations. Um even at the annual conference, they always doing topics that are centered around um stuff that's relevant to what's going on in the state. And even a lot of stuff that's happening nationally, they've been kind of keeping their finger on the pulse and letting us know as, you know, board members across the state, hey, this is what we need to do. So I'm glad that we're going this direction, and I look forward to us um getting things rolling and look forward to participating. So and making sure that um we uh plug this out into the community, making sure that the community feels that they are part of it, and we just don't want one group. We want multiple groups. So we want people that never really participate in stuff. We want people that always participate. We want those people in the middle of the road, uh no matter their background. So I think that'd be good.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Bradley. Trustee Barnes?
Madam President, do we recall the cost of how much M S A, Michigan Association of School Board is gonna charge for this?
I'm sorry, I don't have that. We had that information previously. Um I'm sure we can find that and send that to the board.
I think if if I'm not mistaken.
I don't think about nine thousand.
About eight thousand.
That was the, that was, yeah, different firms. The other firm, they had the price listed, because I didn't see the price in there.
But I, yeah, I would think, I don't know what they think, but I think it's about eight thousand.
It may be around that.
Eight thousand. And they would, they would basically lead the work, you know, help, help, help guide them.
We can uh, we'll still send that out, Ms. Liz, if when we get that. Please, can we share that with the board as soon as we get that? Yes, sir. Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
All right. So we have the clarification provided on the call. Any other questions, comments, concerns from the board? Mr. Johnson, I just want to thank you for being right on time with that.
Right. I was going, I was going to say, you know, follow the money.
All right. Hearing none. Secretary Triplett, can you please call the vote for the approval of staff report S one with M A S B as a selected firm?
President Robinson?
Yes.
Vice President Bradley?
Yes.
Secretary Triplett?
Yes.
Treasurer Creighton?
Yeah.
Trustee Barnes?
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan?
Yes.
Trustee Rocket Martin?
Yes.
Motion care.
All right. I'm pretty excited.
Yeah, I have a quick question too with that.
Go ahead.
When will they uh start doing this as soon as possible, or will it be about a few weeks?
We're gonna contact them tomorrow. I'm happy because we get to start the work now in July. My hope is to have a strategic plan before first day of school. Um it should be about a five-week process, but we need to let M S B kind of see what the lay of the land is, design it out for us, and we'll go with it.
All right. Make sure Debbie's there.
Yes, sir. And I do want to say thank you so much, Board of Education. I do agree with the trustees with that alignment piece. I think that just makes it stronger. Everything's the same. So I'm all on board with that. Thank you so much.
I would, I would also like to say, when you look at uh strategic planning, and I did share that, you know, this is something that I think we, you know, we have enough data, we have enough information, we've been garnering data for years. And so we don't have to rush it. We need to make sure that once it is, because it is like a live document, it is ongoing, it is growing. But you know, just to say that it needs to be completed and finished, I think it's gonna take a lot more than that. So I don't want you to feel like you got to rush to say that we have one. You know, just that we need to be able to say, look, this is where we are. We're starting, we're doing it, you know, even if it's all the way to the you know, even if it's all the way to the end of the first market period, first semester. But at least we got something that you can have as a template and we can have as a base for it, you know. But we think getting it started, if not, but it does not have to be done because I don't think that we can really do what, what we, what we really need to do in five weeks. But just the fact that you have that support, and we have that support, I think is absolutely amazing.
Thank you.
I would just like to add to that conversation as well, is that I'm hoping that our strategic plan can include elements of diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Okay.
I think that's very important. I don't know what that process looks like, ensuring that's embedded, it was developed. But I think we, we really can't have a strategic plan without having elements of diversity, equity, and inclusion considered in the things that we do.
And everybody should be welcome at this table.
Oh, for sure.
You know, regardless to what people feel about individuals or thoughts or groups or organizations, everybody must be given an opportunity to be at this table. So, when they come to this table, at least their voices will be heard, and they will have an opportunity to be a part of it. And once it's done, you won't have a whole bunch of backlash about this and that and the other. What came out of it, it was this and that and the other, you know, that's what we need to really, really be looking and making sure that that happens.
All right. So, thank you, everyone. I am excited that we have selected our firm. We are gonna move it right along to staff report S two.
Thank you so much. This is, so as you know, we received the three million dollars over the next five years with the Michigan Comprehensive, excuse me, Comprehensive Literacy Development Grant. As a part of that grant, we were, we were approved for training of staff for the grant. And any purchase over twenty-five thousand dollars need board approval. And in key point language of the grant, of the, of the application that was submitted, approved, and awarded, Benton Harbor is, we're working close with the Michigan Education Corp to implement a structured tutoring model in the lower elementary schools. The position have been posted on our website and the Michigan Education Corporation recruits. The programs show higher levels of success when tutors come from the community. So, these are jobs for Benton Harbor area. We're, we're looking for Benton Harbor candidates to apply for these tutoring opportunities. And it, it pays good money, which is a stipend of seven hundred twenty-three dollars, bi-weekly education award of up to four thousand four hundred forty-one dollars can be used to repay federal student loans. It's just a good deal creating jobs for the community through that grant. So, reason for board approval, purchases over twenty-five thousand dollars need board approval according to the most recent State of Michigan Department of Education threshold. Facts and analysis, the training of staff is required for the literacy grant recently awarded to the district. This is done in conjunction with Michigan Education Corps, M E C. There are nine interventionist training, there are nine participant at five thousand dollars, which is forty-five thousand dollars in total. The recommended action is that Benton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education votes to approve the training of staff with the Michigan Education Corp as presented by the Hope Network.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Townsill. Is there a motion to approve staff report S two?
I know that we approved staff report S two.
The motion has been made by trustee Rocket Martin. Is there a second or support?
Second.
The motion has been made by trustee Rocket Martin and supported by trustee Buchanan. This time, I'll open the floor for questions, comments, and concerns from the board.
Madam President? First of all, I see here that it have, and I hear Dr. Townsill saying that there will be opportunities for people in the community to do tutoring and, and be able to support those types of, of this, this, this particular initiative. Do we already have nine interventionists here in Benton Harbor Area Schools?
Yeah, but not is outside of this grant, however. So, we've already had interventionists in our schools prior to me coming on board. So, yes, we do.
So, that, but, but we do have nine that are already employed as interventionists throughout the district.
Do you know the answer, Ms. Gail? It's possible we have vacancies, but ultimately, we want to recruit our individuals from Benton Harbor in the immediate area. I often hear that we always hire outside. I want to publicly say that we're looking inside first. Yes, ma'am? Correct.
Who, who, who is this entity that hires?
Michigan Education Corp.
Okay. So, again, I guess my question for clarification purposes, we already have interventionists in Benton Harbor Area Schools, right?
But not specific to this literacy focus. Does that make sense? So, we have interventionists that are S E L interventionists, restorative practices, but we don't have literacy tutors that are going to serve as an intervention or response to intervention.
So, we're gonna hire nine interventionists in the line with this grant?
No. M E C is going to hire. We're looking for them to recruit from our pool of people in Benton Harbor, some retired educators, former teachers, anybody who's worked and has a passion for early childhood education. We want them to apply with Michigan Education Corp so they can get the benefits of the bi-weekly stipend and the student loan.
I guess it's my desire and hope that, you know, that they actually, that there is an asserted effort to identify those people from this community.
Okay.
That's coming from Benton Harbor. It is too much money going outside of this community. And we have people in this community who are qualified to do this work and will be dedicated to doing this work. And I am very concerned, and I will be watching with a close eye to make sure when there's an outside entity that's going to identify these people, all of these third-party people doing this, and I know that might be within the parameters of the grant.
Yeah.
And I'm clear on that. But within the parameters of the grant, we do have some say-so.
Okay.
As it relates to that grant, because I, it, it's just too much. It, it, it really has become very concerning for me. So, I looked at the nine interventionist training. I know that we're moving in that direction, and I am willing to support it.
Yes, sir.
But I definitely am supporting this with the emphasis being placed on Benton Harbor.
For sure.
And people that are truly committed to Benton Harbor Area Schools, Benton Harbor students, and from this community of Benton Harbor. Because there are more people here than people know and give credit that's capable of doing this kind of work.
Yep. So, my goal is to turn M E C to a pool of candidates that are right here in the community that have a passion for education here. So, they can take advantage of those opportunities. So, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Do you have a public?
Okay. So, let me just pause for one second, because I know we're normally virtual. You guys are used to be giving you the go, but we have to still make sure that I give you guys the floor when we're gonna start talking about details. So, I'm gonna try to send back to Secretary Triplet to finish his questions, and then I'll go to trustee Rocket Martin.
So, if, within this grant, is there money set aside to really get advertisement out to make sure that it gets to the community and that, that that is a targeted group of people? Or is, is there anywhere, any, any wiggle room in there with that?
I think from our human resources department, we can be intentional about advertising for local talent to apply through our social medias, through our word of mouth for our board members. I mean, as superintendent, I want local people working in these capacities because I do know the impact of tutoring. And nothing like someone who knows the kids and knows the community, knows the demographic, to support our kids. So, that's what I'm looking for. And I'll ensure that when I'm meeting with Michigan Education Corp to our chief of school, that that is our primary focus. And then we can probably also add that as an ongoing agenda item on one of our committee meetings to, to see what kind of talent we're, we're finding to support our young people.
All right. Trustee Rocket Martin?
I was gonna ask, what prerequisites do they have to have?
For the job opportunity?
For those to apply, what prerequisites do they need to have in place?
So, ideally, so what we have here, ideally, the perfect opportunity for retired teachers, members of the community who enjoy working with kids. If you worked for Boys and Girls Club in the past, have an opportunity working at the state food service, any type of coaching capacity, because we're gonna train you up and get you right in front of those young people. And it's tutoring to increase that academic achievement. If we recall, it was less than five percent proficient in advance, and that's not gonna be our future. We're gonna always be half or above as we move forward.
I'm raising my hand like I'm not chair.
I do have a question.
Uh, I have a question as well. So, is this the, are these the only positions within the grant that are hired through Michigan Education Corp? Or are there others?
So, through the grant, we had to identify. So, you're gonna see in the next staff report, we have to identify a program to actually run. So, we are a cohort of five school districts in the state that works with the Michigan Department of Education and Michigan Education Corps. So, it's, it's going to be other programs that we partner with to execute. But this is the first batch of training that must be done to support our kids.
And all of this is something that's written directly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Gail, you answering my question?
I just wanted to, to answer the trustee Rocket's question. I pulled it up. These are the minimum for education. Must be eighteen years of age or older by the start date. Must have at least a high school diploma or recognized equivalent by the start date. Must be either citizen, national, or lawful permanent resident alien in the United States. Must pass mandatory pre-service background checks. Must not extirp four or more prior terms of service with a very poor state or national. And, and as far as recruiting locally, we encourage board members to refer community members to our website.
Okay. So, you answered my question. Where are these positions that we posted on our site?
They are posted.
Okay. I'm gonna go to Treasurer Creighton, then we go trustee Buchanan, and then trustee Barnes. We have more Treasurer Creighton.
You need to give it. No, but I'm, I'm just, I guess, I've never heard of this. And so, I just wonder, um, who is this Michigan Education Corp? And then, I guess I'm gonna be confused because it says that we're looking to approve training opportunities, and then we're talking about hiring. And I'm really honestly just confused. And then I see another staff report to follow that asks us to pay for some other stuff. And I think in a meeting prior to today, we've asked that the grant be rolled out so that we don't have to keep, you know, kind of figuring out piece by piece. If all of these things are in the grant, I, I would just like for us to get them and to look at them so that each month, we won't have these. I mean, I almost wanna say it's a surprise because I've never heard of it. And then, yeah, I guess I'm too concerned as well if we're, if we have a third party that's hired to provide a service, then why do we then have to pay more money out of our grant back to this third party? And is this third party a part of the grant? So, I guess that's why I'm confused. So, it's saying M E C, but then it's saying Hope Network. So, I think it's a lot of stuff on the table that I'm really confused about and that's new.
So, all of this is in the grant application that was approved. All of the, so all, anything that comes to the board from the Michigan Comprehensive Literacy State Development, Literacy Development Grant, is directly our language that was approved by the state. So, when they went through the rigorous, I think we scored the maximum points, ten points, for, that we wrote this into the grant to have training for tutors to, we need tutors. Otherwise, if we didn't have this Michigan, this grant here, this wouldn't be an issue. We'd be going through the agenda moving forward. But because literacy is our number one focus, and we spent a lot of resources writing this grant, this is a great benefit for our community. So, we have to pay Michigan Education Corp to do professional development for tutors. We don't do, we don't, we don't have a tutoring program here. So, we're paying a corporation to train, to recruit. Our people pay them a salary, train them up so we can deploy them into our schools to support with multi-tier system, support of literacy comprehension, the entire reading, et cetera. So, this is all in the literacy. I thought we gave this to all board members in the past. It was on our agenda. We presented it. I'm more than happy to send that application out again that was approved by the state, but none of this is coming from, this is all directly pulled from our grant, which is asking for board approval because it's over twenty-five thousand. Now, we are approved to do it. We're just asking our board to approve us to expend, expend over twenty-five thousand dollars to execute, recruit some people. We create jobs. We just created nine tutoring jobs in the city that jobs that didn't exist. If we didn't have this grant, we wouldn't be talking about it. But because we have it, we gotta implement it now. And on the next staff report, that's to run the program. So, you know, we can just do teaching and learning the way we've done it in the past, but I'm, I tasked our team with putting together a great grant application. And now, we can invest three million dollars into literacy specific, and that's a game changer, the winner for our young people. So, I'm more than happy to share whatever additional information that is needed to all board members so we can ensure that we're comfortable. But this is directly from our grant application.
Madam President?
You, you still have a floor, Chief.
Thank you so much. So, again, I haven't heard of Michigan Education Corp. I'm just wondering. And then, Hope Network. Like I said, those two companies, I've not heard us talk about that. And I, I was not aware, is what I'm saying, that we were hiring non-interventionists. Not that I'm against hiring them, but I wasn't aware. This is what we were doing. And so, I'm just wondering. I guess I don't really see how it's connected because I haven't heard of it before. And we do have interventionists currently, and we have teachers currently. And so, what is the plan to invest money back into our interventionist and teacher? Because I guess for me, this is looking like a third party that's coming in, and we're gonna pay money, spend forty-five thousand dollars to, to train another group of people that we don't even know who they are. I feel like we're almost doing this backwards. And so, I'm, I'm not really, like I said, I just, I'm not aware of it. And I don't know that I'm comfortable, you know, moving forward. Not that I'm against it, but I, I feel like we have enough information before now. I think we need to do a little homework or, or figure out or pull some things up to see, you know, can we see the application? Can we see what it is that we're approving? Because we're approving these things blind. And then, that's a little uncomfortable for me.
Okay. Trustee, I'm gonna go to trustee Buchanan and then trustee Barnes.
Okay. President Robinson, in, in the first year that I, I was on the board, we had a program. And they had outside people to come in. And I went to a meeting where, within the high school. This person had fifteen referred. And just like, I know everybody in school, I worked there two years. But I know this family, they went to church, and the kid went this and this and that. And so, I remember the can on the desk. And the little boy wanted some water. But anyway, by this person being, I don't know anything about the student, they've been out of people. Give him a change. And, and when the mother called me crying, we got it straight. So, if there's any way possible, Dr. Townsill, that you could hire somebody that know I poured water on the window, but that gets stuck high. Because we need people in our community that can, I can't afford our kids. Stop saying I'm on, writing a referral, getting rid of. That's one of my biggest things we need to do with these. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, trustee Buchanan and Treasurer Creighton. Trustee Barnes?
Um, when I look at this, I, I do feel like we're doing most of the work. We'll be the ones recruiting and encouraging people to apply for this on our school district's website. And then, they're serving as the temp agency, basically. We're doing the referral. So, my question is, is there a cut that Benton Harbor Area Schools is getting in the backend of this? And it does bring me pause because, you know, I've been here for a while, over twenty years. We've seen John Hopkins University Project that was supposed to bring people. We've seen Cambridge Institute. And now, we're seeing Michigan Education Corps as serving as a temp agency. Why isn't this something that the district cannot do in-house?
I think that's a great question. So, I just want to be clear. This is going to be monitored over five years. I can't speak to what they had in the past with John Hopkins, but I do know that we're creating tutoring opportunities for people to serve. I know it says interventionist, tutoring is an intervention. We have S E L intervention, we have restorative practices. This is money that we receive from the state to say how we're going to target literacy. And we're partnering with, as other districts, with Michigan Education Corp to do that training for those individuals within Benton Harbor. Hopefully, it's Benton Harbor people that have applied for those opportunities to get trained and support us with executing the plan for increasing literacy for our students. So, it's, you know, it, it, our cut is that we got the money to extend specifically. So it's, you know, it's, it, it, our cut is that we got the money to extend specifically for kids. Get their kids reading better, writing better, comprehending better, and ultimately, uh, doing, performing better on, on their assessments. Yes, sir.
Okay, um, sorry, I was.
You can finish your question, Trustee Bowen, then we'll go to Secretary Triplet, and then I have a comment.
So my question is, will we have to vote on this year? Because I, I heard it's gonna be jobs created.
Yeah, so, yeah, so next year, so I like to have annual training. Uh, this is professional development that's over twenty-five thousand dollars. So I do expect to bring this to the board next year. Additionally, there's metrics that we must hit with regards to when you receive grants. You have to turn that, um, that, um, fidelity paper in to let them know that you did what you said you're gonna do. So we said we're going to hire interventionists that are gonna be tutors for our kids. And when they get that report, we gotta say we did that. Otherwise, they would, you know, take all that money back from us. And this is money going directly to student achievement. It's a win for our kids, a hundred percent.
I have a quick question. I'm sorry, and then I'll go to Secretary Triplet. The grant that we wrote, is Michigan Education Corps already written into the grant as the people that are doing? That's something that's a part of the grant?
Yes, it's a part of the grant. That's what was identified from all the cohorts from the Michigan Comprehensive Literacy.
So we, so in us applying to this grant and getting approved, we're required to follow the guidelines and stipulations of this grant?
Yes, we are. Be, because the state are already, you know, ready to go and give us that check so we can start implementing. We have to do this now. They say start now. So there's not no, you know, we waiting to Christmas to start. This has to start now. So we want to, you know, hopefully get this approved so we can run. Otherwise, I can't do professional development with our tutors.
That was, that was the same question I was wanting to ask. And, and I think with, uh, Treasurer Creighton was saying, I think that we need to really look at the rollout when we become a meeting, because I know, I was gonna ask, I think other schools, everybody that's in this grant is using this particular, um, group to do the training and what have you. And so there are specific things in the, in the grant. And I think for us, like, 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 um, um, Treasurer Creighton said, and oftentimes I've set at this table, I, it's not that I do not support, I just don't feel prepared enough and having enough information to be able to say, yes, I can support this one hundred percent. But knowing that this is in the grant and that Michigan Education Corps is a part of this grant, and they will be the ones that will do the training regardless to who, that who all of the cohort have identified they'll be using, then I feel better. And so I think when we get clarification on those kind of things, that, 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 that brings it up to speed.
See, let me, let me give a little context. This is one thing I do know. One district that was awarded the same amount of money of us over the next four years is Detroit Public Schools. And because prior to them having the grant, they was already trying to focus on literacy in the district, working with the Beyond Basics Program. But now that they're a part of this, they got two different literacy initiatives going on, which is the Michigan Comprehensive Literacy Grant that we're all working on together. We don't have that issue. If we did not have this literacy grant that we were awarded, it would be business as usual, us trying to figure all of this stuff out with the complexities that already exist. Right now, we have a boost of, of financial resources to, you know, hiring outside entity to hire our people from within to support our student achievement. Um, I'm more than happy to, um, uh, share the literacy grant with everyone. So we can, you know, if you want to ask any more questions, poke holes, get more clarity, we can get that because it's gonna be stuff rolling down the pipe that we're going to, you know, bring to the table. And that's why, you know, I, I don't want anyone to be surprised. I don't want to be surprised, you know, so I understand that.
So I think what would be helpful is what they mentioned. A lot of times Dr. Shulman is good at doing presentations. And so you guys know the outlines of the grant and when you have to bring what to us and how it has to be rolled out. We don't necessarily know what to expect in that process. We approve the grant, know what it's meant to do, but there's always gonna be those little things in the grant that is going to come to a surprise us, even though it's something we've already approved. So I think her knowing how she has to roll things out, even if we just got a little, like some, leave, just FYI, you know, we have to do A, B, C, and D as a part of this grant, and this is something the board has approved, this will be brought to you by this particular month, maybe in your curriculum meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, so that they know all of the nuances of the grant that maybe we haven't started to do yet.
Sure, that's no problem.
Okay.
Madam President, is, 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 is Dr. Shulman, why is she not here? Is she online or is she here?
She is online, but she's not in person, and I did give that excuse.
Okay, yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments from the board regarding Staff Report S two?
Madam President, I was, oh, wait. I, I was just gonna point out that we did, um, discuss, I think at the last meeting, um, when we had some concerns from a H R perspective, or some of the positions that were being filled, we did ask for exactly what you just explained. And just as a point of clarity, I did pull that up, and these positions are in there. However, in their defense, it does say a partnership with Michigan Education Corps. So I'm going to, um, reach a little and assume that this is a partnership, hopefully that they were referring to. Um, because we did ask for this information so that we don't have to spend a lot of time at the table trying to figure out, um, what's going on. And so, um, I would just like to ask Dr. Council, is this a partnership, um, or is this something else?
Yes, this is a partnership with M E C, the Michigan Education Corps.
Is that her PowerPoint, her beauty?
This is, yeah, when we had that, um, meeting a few weeks ago, we were asking for an outline, so we'll know the next steps. Um, it doesn't talk about at all the nine, um, interventionist. However, it does say a partnership, um, with the M E C, so.
That is what it is, uh, Treasurer Creighton.
Thank you for clarifying that that was provided to us. Um, and as stated, a lot of times we'll watch the presentation and see those things. But when you come back to a meeting later, I presented, sometimes we have to put two and two together. So if I'm not mistaken, we already have, oh, you had a comment, go ahead.
I just wanted to provide additional information that hopefully is useful. Oh, the district does not do anything other than post those positions because that is the understanding with our partners. We provide all applications to them. They make a selection, those people are not, are directly agreed. I just wanted to clarify that. It is their preference to do local recruitment versus bringing their own people from out of town.
I'm not, I think.
That is our, our, our.
Thank you so much.
And so we, so we are going to make effort to ensure that our community is aware of these. That's something that we, we just mentioned, right?
Yeah, to recruit locally, to encourage local people to apply for those rooms.
For advertising. Uh, Trustee Rocket.
Martin, we're discussing.
Yeah, we're on discussion. I believe somebody has already moved to approve, and can you remind us?
Motion to approve S two was made by Trustee Martin.
Okay, so you already made the motion, and Trustee Buchanan supports it. So if there's no other conversation, um, I'll pass it along to Secretary Triplet to call the role or the vote for Staff Report S two.
Madam President, I just have one other thing.
Yep, go ahead, Treasurer Creighton.
Do we have, um, the five-year budget or proposed budget for this grant?
It's, it's all in the grant, yes.
Was it possible for us to see that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
All right, the mic is yours, sir.
President Robinson.
Yes.
Vice President Bradley.
Yes.
Secretary Triplet, yes. Treasurer Creighton.
Yeah.
Trustee Bowen.
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan.
Yes.
Trustee Rocket Martin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so Staff Report S two has passed. If there are any members of the community that are listening, we want to make sure that you heard that we will be hiring for nine interventionists or tutor. Um, so, so make sure you're watching our website for that posting. Next up on the agenda, Dr. Townville, the floor is yours for Staff Report S three.
Thank you. Um, so the subject is the purchase of the letters material and licensing from the Michigan Comprehensive Literacy Grant. Um, the reason for board approval was purchases over twenty-five thousand need board approval according to the most recent State of Michigan Department of Education threshold. Facts and analysis. The purchase of bundled materials and licensing from Voyager Sokris is required for the implementation of the Michigan Comprehensive Literacy Grant awarded to the district. Um, it's a total of fifty-three thousand, one hundred six dollars and ninety cents. The recommended action is that Benton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education vote to approve the purchase as presented of the letters, participant, material bundles, and two-year lease agreements.
All right, thank you, Dr. Townville. Um, before I call for a motion to approve, I'll just ask the question as well. Is this something also that's written into and required of?
Yes, this is a requirement to run, to implement the program.
All right, is there a motion to approve Staff Report S three?
Some.
The motion has been made by Secretary Triplet, is there support?
The board.
The motion has been made by Secretary Triplet and supported by Trustee Buchanan that we approve Staff Report S three. And I will pass the floor to Trustee Rocket Martin. I believe you have been watching our comments.
Just for clarification, all of this has been approved by the state?
Yes, the state is expecting us to do this.
All right, any other questions or comments? So I have a question, and it, and I would normally know what those were. This Hope Network, uh, on voyage for forty-five thousand? What exactly is this attached to?
Staff report, we just asked to.
That's the first, yeah, that's for the professional development.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, guys, okay.
No problem.
Any questions, comments, other questions, comments, or concerns from the board? All right, hearing none, Secretary Triplet, I believe you are all set to call the vote for Staff Report S three.
President Robinson.
Yes.
Vice President Bradley.
Yes.
Secretary Triplet, yes. Sec, um, Treasurer Creighton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowen.
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan.
Yes.
Trustee Rocket Martin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Dr. Townville, for your presentation of information and your clarification provided, um, with getting your report passed. Next on the agenda, we have Mr. Johnson. He is going to begin with Staff Report F one.
The subject is asbestos abatement in building. In building demolition bids. Reason for board consideration? The Board of Education requested bids for asbestos removal and the demolition of three surplus buildings that would not be economically feasible to restore. Fact analysis? The board owns multiple buildings that have passed the end of their useful lives. These buildings are adding ongoing costs to the district's general fund, month after month, year after year. Three buildings that are past their useful lives include Bard Elementary, Martindale Elementary, and North Shore School. All three of the buildings have asbestos in them. Removal of the asbestos is required before the building demolition could begin. Asbestos removal is specialized work that requires special equipment and special procedures. Bids were received from five companies. These bids are valid until August seventeen of this year. If the bids are not awarded by that date, and if this work is sought in a future year, there's a strong likelihood that the board would receive fewer, less competitive bids, meaning more expensive bids. This evening, it's recommended that a special board meeting be scheduled to present and discuss the removal of asbestos and the demolition of Bard Elementary School, Martindale Elementary School, and/or North Shore School before the bids expire. There is no policy reference. And the recommended action here is that the Board of Education schedule a special meeting to consider the removal of the asbestos and the demolition of one, two, or all three of these buildings.
Okay, so to provide some clarification, so we discussed this in our finance meeting, I believe. And so there are bids that the district has already received for these particular buildings that expire. And as stated, if we do not select a bid, we could, we would have to request new bids, and they may potentially increase. The conversation that we had with Mr. Johnson is that the board has not had an opportunity as a whole to discuss this just yet, or to come in agreement that the board as a whole wants to proceed in this direction. And so initially, the conversation was whether or not we were going to act on one of these bids. And what we communicated is that we did not think the board was in position or ready to, to act. And this is actually a full conversation in itself. So what we discussed in our finance meeting, as Treasurer Creighton mentioned earlier, is potentially having a meeting where we can discuss this, because this is going to be quite a conversation, um, regarding the, whether we're gonna act on these bids or allow them to expire or suit other things. So what he's asking is that we set a special meeting so that we can have the time to discuss the status of our buildings and our facilities and have the conversation that we haven't had an opportunity to have with the board. So the date is the thirteenth. My recommended date would be two weeks from today. That would give Trustee Bowen an opportunity with his employer to schedule any time off that he may need to. You know, I need to what you say. It would give us a week without a week next week. Um, and then we would be able to, because we already have our training Thursday, so we would get a week off from being in person. And then we would be able to come back to twenty-seventh and really just fully focus on the status of our buildings, our facilities, and then also discuss this abatement and build demolition bill. So that is essentially what he's presenting and asking us to do. I didn't want anyone to think that we're essentially asking you to approve a demolition. We're just trying to get a kind of date on the books to have that conversation. And so my recommended date is the twenty-seventh, I believe, of, the Tuesday, of July. That works, if we have five thirty.
Let's keep in mind our committee.
So I'm, I'm actually open. So let's, so let's, let's do this in order. I just wanted to provide that clarification. So if there, is there a motion to accept Staff Report F one?
I have a motion to accept.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Trustee Rocket Martin and supported by Vice President Bradley to accept Staff Report F one. What we need to do at this particular time is find the date that works for all. And I believe you all said that Tuesday does not work, so.
Well, well, let's just look at this calendar with our committee.
Okay, who, it was, is one particular person that didn't work for, for the twenty-seventh, or who?
I just say Thursday was one day.
Oh, okay.
Thursday would be a day off, would be a different. So we won't, we won't run into committee meetings.
So it, so are you guys free on that Thursday, the, is that the twenty-ninth?
Yeah, be free on that day.
President Robinson?
Yes, ma'am.
I do have a question. Well, this, oh, I'm sorry, um, so we made the motion, and Trustee Bowen said he was before me, and then I was on.
Okay, go ahead with your question. Because we are on questions, comments, and concerns, right? Okay, go ahead, Trustee.
My question is, um, I know two of the buildings are outdated, but I also know North Shore. And I, I feel naive because I am on the committee, but it hit me out. We were gonna sell the school, correct? And it was not a problem with asbestos, or was there, did that buyer know there was asbestos, or?
I can't speak for the buyer, but the building, I believe there was a building inspection during the process.
So it's, when we do have this meeting next month or next week, whenever we schedule it, can we have a list of all the buildings that do have asbestos back in the day? I don't know if Jashanna and Matthew would remember. We used to get a yellow or pink letter that came in the mail.
President Robinson and Vice.
Oh, sorry, President Robinson, President Shulman, you name it, I understand. Madam President and Vice President.
They say you don't want to shop like him, man. You want the official capacity.
But back in the day, we used to get a pink letter, and it told the citizens what conditions these buildings were in. Because here we are, we do have, and I gotta be careful how I say this. We have ties to these buildings, and I think our public needs to understand that we're just not here in an alter, you know, motive to demolish some of these buildings, but the condition and the plight they're in. Because now you see, um, North Shore, next year, will we see Martindale on the list? I mean, not Martindale, Boynton on the list, or Morton Hill, or the schools in Fairpoint. So I do think we need to, when we meet next week or the two weeks, it needs to be a list of all the conditions, what's going on, if we can get that. That's what I would recommend.
Okay, and, um, I'm sorry, I got lost. Did we, did we, did we say that Thursday, the twenty-ninth? Was that the recommended date?
I'm ready to remember.
Does that work for everyone if we do Thursday, the twenty-ninth? Is that what that date is? I don't have a.
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
So President Robinson, my question, whenever I get to.
Go ahead, we have a board.
So I was gonna ask, is this going to be just a board meeting, or will this be a community forum?
So this is actually a. So this is actually a board meeting. However, we know that the community has feedback that they would like to offer regarding the building, just like any other, um, item on our agenda. So we want to ensure that the community is aware of this meeting, so if they would like to attend and add comments during the public comment on agenda items, they can do that prior to us beginning that meeting.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
Make sure that's made, and thank you.
Yeah, because I think it's important for the community to know this is their opportunity to come out and to let us know things that we don't necessarily know, um, about like what Trusty, um, Bowen was talking about, and some things that I think we discussed in finance meeting that, you know, this is, uh, we will use thinking funds potentially for this. And so I think it is, it's important to invite the public to come to share their concerns, um, and prior knowledge about our building, um, moving forward.
Thank you, Treasurer Creighton, for making sure we mention that piece, because we know that people know we have more reasons to welcome, but we want to make sure they know that we, we do want to invite them, so that they can hear their feedback. So right now, we have July twenty-ninth, that Thursday, we can set it at five thirty.
President Robinson, I have one more.
Yeah, and then after you, I'm gonna, well, let me go to Secretary Triplett.
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead, Secretary Triplett.
Um, I, I just, you know, when I looked at this, and I'm glad that you all gave clarification on it, that you get the clarification prior to. Um, I know, um, Trustee and I had some very, very serious words about the word passion and connected, connectedness and what have you. Um, we made it through that conversation, but the building that we're sitting in right now has asbestos. All of these buildings have asbestos, okay, so don't, we, we, we just don't want to get thrown off on asbestos. I also want it to be placed on the record that historically, and within the last two administrations, it is very clear that these places were set on facilities and operations. These places were neglected, and it almost looked like it was purposefully, that they were purpose, purposefully neglected. Um, I had an opportunity that at one point, there was a conversation where the Alumni Association from Sorta, um, Elementary School, they came and they had a community walkthrough. And what was so disturbing to me was when we walked in that building, the last word that was written on the board by the teachers that was in that building when they closed that building down was there. The same seat, booklet, garbage, the, nothing was done to this building. And so it almost appears that this was done intentionally. And I think that we need to go back through, this, this, this was under partnership with Ben Risa, where people were paid millions of dollars to do work that they did not do. If you go through, I live in this community, I go around to all of these schools, you go and look in the Morton's, um, Elementary School, where Mrs. uh, Creighton was the last principal there, I believe. The stuff, materials and stuff are still in that building, right now. And so, you know, um, you know, for the past ten or fifteen years under Dr. Seawood's leadership, uh, we need to close, we, we, we shut down Hull in the middle because it's mold. And we take kids and we move kids from Hull over to Fairplain Junior High. In the midst of that move, we lost fifty to a hundred students because parents didn't want their kids uprooted in December over to this building. Then you turn back around, a year and a half later, they're back at Hull. You know, and, and, and so it, it, it's to me, I, I, I'm, I'm having a problem with it. I think that we need to, even, even right now, for the last two years, be under this administration with this facility and operations directly. When you look in this building, you look in these buildings, it's not acceptable. It's not acceptable, and we have to have those real conversations about accountability, what people are doing in this district. Because first of all, these buildings belong to the citizens of Benton Harbor, the taxpayers of Ben Harbor Area Schools. They do not belong to the support of education of people who want to make backdoor deals, like, um, Trustee Bowen said. We were getting ready to sell North Shore, and it was, everything was, was, was groovy, now it's on this list because it has asbestos. You know, with this right here, I think that the, the asbestos removal needs to be something separate. And also, when we're talking about using our thinking funds to, 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 uh, demolish outdated buildings, which the majority of our buildings are outdated. We're talking about using that money, we need to take that money and fix this high school up. We need to take that money over there at Fairplain East, where these teachers were in summer school, and it was almost ninety-five degrees up in, in those, in that building. But they were in that same building at Fairplain East this winter, and they were freezing. We need to strategically look at how we are using these thinking funds and take care of what we got right now and make sure that it's off the cart. You walk down this hallway, and you look out in this hallway, right in front of the office, over the display, the wall is, 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 water has come through, it's dilapidated around the main, um, showcase out there. So I don't think that, you know, even if, and it's not about me just having this connection to anything, because I have a connection to Ben Harbor Area Schools. Like all of us, and I believe that from the bottom of my heart, that each one of us that are on this Board of Education have that, that same connection. I'm not here, I, I'm just saying, that money from the sinking fund needs to be put in these buildings right now. We all went on tour in these buildings, we went as a board of education. These walls are not painted, baseboards, this stuff has been the same stuff you go into this cafeteria for three years. The same paint off of that line by that cafeteria is still off of that wall. And so I don't think, I think that we need to really have a serious conversation about how we're gonna use these sinking funds and how we're gonna make sure that the building that our kids are in right now are the best that they can be. And then we can come back, if, if, if it's another thousand dollars next year, and because we really need to make sure that those buildings, first of all, of course, that they need to be brought out, that people need to go in there and do their job and get that stuff up out of there, and clean these buildings out. You know, so I, that, this is, this is where I am. And again, I, I'm glad that you gave us that clar- clarification, Madam President, and I will definitely be up on top of it, because this is nothing to play with. This is very, very serious, and I think that this community, and the taxpayers and the citizens of this community have been disrespected long enough. And they have not been brought to the table to really have those real conversations about really what's going on. And nobody wants to accept what it is that has to happen in the area of accountability. There is no way that Martindale should have a tree coming through its roots. And we have paid millions of dollars to people on facilities and custodians and all these different things, these are closed buildings. How much money do we actually pay for Martindale to be open, or, or, or for Martindale to step there? How much money do we actually pay for Bard to be shoveled out? How much money do we pay for electricity and Bard, you know, people can throw this stuff out there? No one has given us any information about what is actually being paid, who is actually being paid to, who has been paid to make sure that these things are not happening, because it's not acceptable. So I just really want to put that out there, and I, I, and I will be encouraging the citizens, and I will be myself personally, having town hall meetings with constituents so that they can be here and, and, and have a true conversation to find out what's really, really going on with this particular situation and what's happening with our property here and Ben Harbor Area Schools, thank you.
All right, thank you, Secretary Triplett, so I want to back up a second. Liz, if you can remind me of who made the initial motion to approve F one?
Rocket Martin.
Rocket Martin.
Bradley supportive.
Thank you.
I'm here.
So we have now. Yeah, I want to make sure we appropriately have a motion for staff report F one with the new date. So Ra- Trustee Rocket Martin, would you mind re-providing your motion, including the July twenty-ninth date?
Okay, I have, I have taken a motion that we approve, uh, a special meeting for the facility board on Thursday, uh, at five thirty p.m.
Okay.
What day?
Uh, July twenty-nine, Thursday.
All right, thank you, okay, go ahead, Treasurer Creighton, I just wanted to make sure that was on the record appropriately. Even though we don't have to, I can call the special meeting, but I just wanted the, the staff report to include that, go ahead, Treasurer Creighton.
I just wanted to kind of throw out there. Um, at our budget here, I noticed that, um, the agenda filled up quickly and that I don't feel that we had a lot of time to really thoroughly only talk about what we called a meeting for. And so I'm just requesting that as we create our agenda for this, um, I would like for this to, to really be, um, for this conversation, um, about our buildings, the facilities, um, and it, you know, and the bids, and that we don't allow other things to take over the agenda, um, that if another special meeting needs to be called, that we do that appropriately. But I would like for this, um, to be about, you, you know, that, and then, um, also, um, with respect to some things, I think that, um, Trustee Bowen said, and also Trust, um, Secretary Triplett, um, we might want to talk a little bit about a facility plan that could include, um, potential uses for thinking funds, you know, as far as summer maintenance, I don't know. Learned about that, if we could just kind of get, you know, um, I'm sorry, did what happen?
Nothing.
I need cert, I need a trustee to that, to take inside conversation, go ahead, Trustee.
Madam President, uh, do, do we need to read our notice?
I'm fine.
I, I realize I was getting, you know, I think with a little H in there.
I'm not, I'm not gonna call out, Trustee, go ahead, Trustee.
Yeah, so, um, I'm basically just saying that we could talk about, um, I think a facility plan that could potentially include uses of thinking funds to our buildings that are kind of open, you know, just to kind of not necessarily, you know, move with, make an action on it on that day, but if we can talk about some other things that we could potentially, or that you guys are already planning on doing, um, for our open building, so that we can't be naive to just saying that we're only using thinking funds for closed buildings. But if you guys have plans on, you know, things that you're planning to do to kind of upgrade our building. I know that it was the back hallway that was painted and X, Y, and Z, so just the facility plan added to that agenda as possible.
Vice President Bradley?
Yes, um, I was sitting here listening, I want to agree with, uh, Treasurer Creighton, that, you know, we, um, look at a capital approval plan, which I know is gonna tie into our strategic, um, planning session. So if we do have a meeting, I'll, we can look at making a list of what we think is needed dire to, um, you know, so we can start looking at something. So what, you know, like a list of, okay, where can we start it, where we can start putting something to it, like, you know, maybe doing a minor improvement to X, Y, and Z area. Then the other thing I was gonna say to, uh, Secretary Triplett is also, um, a lot of the times, you know, we, we see our buildings and these shapes and stuff, and a lot of that material left in there, and I do, I think I remember Dr. Townsley was saying that we have some materials in there that we could use, and so it's sad, because you even look on YouTube at some of these urban explorations, and they have abandoned buildings in Detroit, and they have materials left in them, so what, how can we be at that situation, and also, you know, by moving forward, what can we do to fix that situation? And that's one thing I think we look at.
Can I add? I just want to, I just want to share, uh, last, this time last summer, we went into a handful of our vacant buildings and pulled out thousands and thousands of books, and gave out big home libraries, you recall we did on video about the home libraries? That's all the resources we got from the books, and all the, if you walk on the third floor down the hallway of all those, the library books you see there, those are books that we pulled out from schools, because we, I think, we said, who was all this stuff sitting here? Just a million, probably hundreds of thousands of dollars of, of material that were sitting potentially, if we get wet. You know, so we, we, we've been grabbing a lot of that stuff that's still in our priorities, because it's good stuff sitting in there, stuff that we can use to this day. Um, so, thank you for sharing those concerns, because that is at the top of our thought when we think about facilities and, and, and some of the curriculum waste that we've just seen just sitting around in these, you know, buildings, there's a lot of brand new stuff sitting.
Random before we go to the next person, Dr. Townsley, I think at our, that we, I might have you closer to the center, so that we don't have to all look down.
Okay, no worries.
Okay, Secretary Triplett, and then we'll go to Trustee Rocket Martin.
There, but, uh, 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 in, in the Morton building in particular, was a part of the stick, right? And thousands and thousands of dollars worth of material, brand new material, what you then bought, purchased in that, in that, for that particular school, that never got transitioned to other buildings, expatriatory tech, narrative tech, things that we're gonna need even for literacy right now that would be able to take off with, with our, our, our present initiative. But at one particular juncture, every principal, um, was required to do a walkthrough their entire building and to submit what it was, I mean, on third floor south, there are fifty-five faded towels in the top. The doors are, uh, room two oh four is the door is broken, all of that stuff was submitted. Nothing was ever done, just do walkthrough. And I'm saying, you know, for me, this, this is stuff that we just have to definitely get up on, on top of. When you walk in Ben Harbor High School, main office, and you see that door to that main office that has been in that shape for seven years, that's not acceptable, it's not. I, I came into the school as a board member in two thousand sixteen, when I left this building, when I came back into this building as a board member, the same display with me and the freshmen, and the National Honor Society was in that display. And I showed you that when you first got hired. And this, when you came through, I was walking through, and I pointed to you.
I was like, huh?
And you didn't know what I was, I showed you that, and it just got taken down two weeks before graduation. So important for, uh, for, for you know, for, for people to ask us to do this kind of stuff, I think there's a lot of internal work that, 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 that really, really, really needs to be done, you know, and what about to do it?
But think of that, though, think of what you just shared, that's a problem.
It is.
Because there wasn't a pandemic before March twenty twenty.
No.
So why was that there for sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, you understand what I'm saying? Now, I do want to say this, the good news, here's the good news, or here's some context, when there is not stability in this seat, anything goes. You understand what I'm saying? So that accountability is out the window, so people submitting this, that, doing inventory, yada, yada, is no accountability. You can do whatever, everyone has an excuse, there's no one, no one to hold me accountable, you know, everyone kind of, you know, even let's say, for example, there's teachers that probably, you know, we got the, some of the best teachers in the world here, but teachers, let's say if a teacher don't meet the expectation, but you don't have a principal there to evaluate, that teacher automatically gets another contract, gets another situation, you understand what I'm saying? So stability and leadership is key, and professional development at that leadership level is key, so we can put those systems back in place and, and recreate as we move forward the new Benton Harbor way. Because, I mean, it's, I, I, I'm on my second high school person, you understand what I'm saying? Got a vacancy at the middle school, you know, I'm looking at, element, I want to be able to look back and say, man, this man, this woman, whomever, has been in that leadership role at least three years, we got something to look for results. You know what I mean? So it, it is hard work, it's very difficult, but I do believe with the stability over time, with the growing pains that we feel, we are gonna see the return on investment for our students, for our finances, for our facilities at every aspect. But again, it's the accountability piece, as soon as, if, by the grace of God, this doesn't happen, I get plucked out of here, you start from scratch, whatever, everything just starts from scratch. I do know with this strategic plan, this, that, we're gonna put systems in place and execute and be held accountable to what we say we're gonna do. Right now, it's a freestyle, ain't nothing, so, we're just doing the best we can do with what we got, making sure, just running school as usual. I love a plan that we can be held to, so we can say, you know what, academic achievement happened this year, finances were better this year, facilities upgraded this year, but prior to that, it was just nothing, of just people working to the best of their abilities. But I, 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 I hear what every member is saying, I, I'm on the same page with you, please believe that. And I'm excited to sit at the tables and listen, learn, and execute the plan that the Board of Education had for the citizens of our community.
Um, Doc, I'm gonna go to Rocket Martin next, but I just want to add a comment to what Dr. Townsley said. I would argue that stability has to be even above his head in the board, because we know in recent years, we have quite a bit of shakeup on our Board of Education. Of course, that allowed me to be appointed to a seat, so I won't complain too much. But I would just encourage our board to ensure that we are all present and, and work out the end of our terms, because the fate of the district relies heavily on the security at the board's seat as well. I just want to make sure everyone hears that, um, we need security at all levels of leadership. And then I'll go to Rocket Martin next, and then Creighton.
I, I'd also like us to think about the feasibility of, instead of putting band-aided patches on old buildings, how about building some new buildings? Our kids deserve new schools, how come they can't have a new high school? Everybody else around town is doing it, we don't have the money for the. Everybody else around town is doing, you know, I have the money, but we can do something, we can try, at least. We tried before, but we can try again. I remember when I went to MLK, they had remodeled it from the ground up. In fact, they were still remodeling when we moved in. And the comments I got from parents, because they pulled their kids out of schools. Like that caliber, they pulled their kids from the surrounding schools and brought them to my school. And I said, well, you're really not in my attendance area at the title, they said, I don't care, I want my kid to go to a new school. Parents care about what their school looks like, when they, how, we haven't had a new school in Benton Harbor since when? Can you, anybody else tell me?
Someone had it on for this?
So how come they can't have a new school? If money is going out in Martinville, stop sending it to Martinville, put it in a new school. If money is going out in Barre, stop sending it to Barre, put it in a new school. Give our kids the kind of facilities they deserve. They deserve brand new, upgraded, modern, new buildings, they do. Gary is on the same, um, kind of status with us, maybe a little bit more. But they build three new elementary schools in one year. I went to elementary schools in the fifties and my school was brand new. Give us a new, but I'm just saying, they upgraded that. That was in the fifties, we have schools here that was in nineteen hundreds.
Exactly, yeah.
So give us some new schools. Give us some new schools, I don't want my kid going to Martinville where the tree is going through, I don't want you to fix it. I want a new school for my child.
Yeah, church up in here tonight.
I'm just saying, we need better facilities, we need modern facilities, we need upgraded facilities. We want our kids to be competitive in this new world, we've gotta give them stuff to be competitive with. They gotta have labs that really work.
That's right.
They gotta have equipment that works, they gotta have everything. Whatever they offer out there, our kids need it, so when they get out there, they'll know what to do with it. So we have to, we have to stop looking like we want a band-aided home on this stuff. Let this stuff go, let's get some new stuff in here, some modern stuff. And you know what, kids will come back, kids go to various primary school because it's new, I've been over there. It's new, it's modern, they're always adding and upgrading and, and building.
That's it.
And that's what we have to do too.
And keeping it up.
Uh, we have to do, we have to be.
I'm gonna allow Dr. Townsley, I think he wants to respond to something said, and I'm gonna go to Creighton and vice president Bradley.
I just wanna say.
I'm gonna ask that you can breathe.
I'll be very brief. No problem.
Right, because I would like to go next.
Oh, um, I like what I'm hearing, um, all I would ask from the board, if y'all give me the green light to explore. I would do exactly that, um, what, I mean, because, um, when I was a high school principal, I was in a brand new school. It attracted teachers, it attracted students, and we rocked and rolled, I mean, I'm talking, but guess what? That can, I, I would love to probably do a, 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 maybe a PowerPoint with this board of, of South Bridge, Massachusetts, where I came from, prior to moving back home to Michigan. They had a high school just like Benton Harbor High School, historic off of Whole Fact, and they street, I think it was called Whole Fact as well too, that's what was so crazy when I got here. It was off, um, excuse me, it was off, whatever, no, their school's called, I'm sure, I'm thinking a hundred times. Anyway, long story short, brand new school, very historic, but they both, both voted to open a brand new school, I'm saying all the bells and whistles. We couldn't, we, we, we had so many students in the school, you understand, people came back, teachers were coming through. I would love to explore that if given the opportunity from the board to see what a potential brand new high school can look like. And then probably, or whatever the priority or the thought is of the board, I would love to explore that opportunity. Because that's the first thing I said when I saw this school, Love the Gym, uh, but I saw all of that land that we own, we own a lot of land. And I said, man, I can see a brand new high school right here, all the bells and whistles, and we will probably get community. And, and philanthropic support to build that new high school. Because of the legacy and tradition of Benton Harbor, so, um, if, at some point, if you guys give me the opportunity to explore. That is right up my alley because our kids deserve it, our families deserve it, and alumnus.
All right, thank you, Dr. Townsley, treasurer Creighton, and then vice president Bradley, and then trustee Bowen.
Madam President, uh, with all due respect to all of my fellow colleagues, um. I do have to stand up for our CFO and say that right now we're not following our norms. Um, we need to go on the presentation that we did schedule this meeting, um, for the twenty ninth, so that we wouldn't let our passion come out tonight.
Oh, you're right, I ain't get twenty questions.
I think, I think we're, we're off topic a bit. And our CFO. Uh, this presentation, and so, um, with effort to respect our norms, um, I think we need to call our vote and then. Maybe take a list and, 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 and write down some of these things that we're very passionate about, our great ideas. And, and save them, um.
For our means.
Definitely.
Thank you, and I'm, I'm gonna go to vice president Bradley and Bowen.
Okay.
I'm gonna keep real short.
Okay.
I'm gonna say this, um, I would recommend that we, um, get a list of, Dr. Townsley, I know you got a lot of your plate or Dr. Johnson. Um, if y'all can get a list of things that, you know, we can get forth at the next meeting. Um, of what we think could be a priority repair we can start working on. Um, and another thing I was gonna say, I think the newest building, when I was going to school, that Point Montessori we had, it was kind of newer. And I think at that time, I don't know, Governor Engler had came down for our literacy or the meat program or something. Um, and then also wanna add note that the high school, um, is actually a hundred years old. Because they did leave a foundation here in nineteen nineteen, according to the yearbook, um. And they opened the building up in, uh, nineteen twenty-two.
It'll be a hundred and fifteen years old in two years, it's the hundred and fiftieth anniversary.
Yeah.
Of Benton Harbor High School.
But this particular building.
Yeah.
Is a hundred.
Okay, so we're gonna proceed, secretary Tripplett, can you please call the vote for staff report F one for the scheduling of the special meetings, seven twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson.
It may not be necessary, but I'll, I'll be out of state on the date of the proposed meeting.
Wait, you won't be?
No, we don't need to. Probably a thousand miles away.
Reschedule now.
Yeah, we can't, I don't think we can do that back then.
We can't.
I'm glad you jumped in for that.
He's trying to get away too.
Okay, so what about just doing that Tuesday at one, we do that Tuesday at five thirty?
The, the regular, the Tuesday, uh, the first Tuesday in August?
No.
Um, seven twenty-nine.
Does that day work?
I mean, yeah, seven twenty-seven, Tuesday, seven twenty-seven.
Or, or potentially give us another day, that might.
Do you have a date that works for you, sir?
It's just the twenty-eighth, the evening of the twenty-eighth, and probably all day the twenty-ninth and thirtieth.
So the twenty-seven, Tuesday works for you?
Sure.
Okay. So can we just do seven twenty-seven? At five thirty, that's two weeks from today, Mr. Bowen, we need you. Email you two to five. Oh, it's a new job.
No, it was this job, but.
I'm, I'm good.
Okay, okay, awesome. Okay, so, right now we are at seven twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one, at five thirty P M, so we wanna ensure that the community hears that updated date. July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, at five thirty P M, in person, will have a meeting regarding our building specifically. Um, it's a best of the basement and building demolition, be it. And so trustee Rocket Martin, can, can you, I know we've done this about three times, but we're gonna keep moving this time. Can you, can I have a motion to approve staff report F one, including July twenty-seven?
I moved that we approved staff report, um, it was the F two.
F one.
With the changes, with the newly changes.
F one.
Oh, F one with the new changes.
Okay, trustee Buchanan, do you support it?
I support it.
All right, secretary Tripplett, can you call the role for the approval of staff report F one with the date of July twenty-seven?
President Robinson.
Yes.
Vice president Bradley.
Yes.
Secretary Tripplett, yes. Treasurer Creighton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowen.
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan.
Yes.
Trustee Rocket Martin.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, Mr. Johnson, you have the board for staff report F two.
Thank you, the subject is food service management company contract renewal. Reason for board consideration, the district's annual contract with Sedexo Magic LLC expired on June thirty. Facts analysis, to comply with the Michigan Department of Education requirements. School districts with food service management company agreements such as the Harbury Schools. Are required to submit the proposed contract renewal fees to the M D E for review and approval before the board votes to renew the contract. The district received a copy of the contract renewal agreement from Sedexo. And, uh, an M D E representative has approved the contract renewal agreement. And so it's recommended this evening that the Board of Education approve a one-year renewal of the Sedexo Magic LLC food service contract.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
All right. So the motion has been made by secretary Tripplett that we approved staff report F two, it's been supported by vice president Bradley. Um, any questions, comments, or concerns? All right, secretary Tripplett, can you follow the vote for staff report F two?
President Robinson.
Yes.
Vice president Bradley.
Yes.
Secretary Tripplett, yes, treasurer Creighton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowen.
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan.
Yes.
Trustee Rocket Martin.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, staff report F two has passed, next, we have staff report F three, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, the subject is monthly financial reports, reason for board consideration. A set of financial reports is provided to the board each month. Facts analysis, this evening it's recommended that payments for all of the district's funds be approved for the month of May twenty twenty-one. Policy reference is sixty-four seventy, payment of claims. The recommended action is that the board approve the May twenty twenty-one payments for the funds as listed below.
All right, can I have a motion to approve staff report F three?
So move.
All right, the motion has been made by secretary Tripplett and supported by vice president Bradley that we approved staff report F three, any questions, comments, or concerns from the board?
I have a question, madam president.
You have a board, trustee Bowen?
Um, I will from the past, and the right thing I can, I got so much paper. I'm looking on this, um, right here. It's, um.
Expenditures.
Yeah, expenditures, what's that gonna do? Possible new payment report, dates five one twenty-one to five thirty-one twenty-one. Um, on there, I see the district lawn service. And I see Scott's Lawn Service. Um, what happened to? The other lawn care service?
What happened to them?
Yeah, I mean, the reason I ask, because I, I have heard some concerns and I'm not seeing them, are they no longer servicing the district?
I've not heard of a change with them, it may be that their billing has gotten behind, but I'll be happy to look into that for you.
Okay, then, um, and madam president, I have several questions.
Okay, you have a floor, go ahead.
I'm looking at this right, and it's nothing against, you know, I, but I see, why do we have? Oh, page three, same report. Um, I see one report on five twenty-eight, Earl Fisher, graduation speaker, two hundred, and then I got another paper. Again, if he thought, again, did we pay him twice, or?
If you would be happy to email details, we'd be happy to look into it further for you, but we have two reports in the board packet that are very similar. One is, presents the vendor name, the check number, the dollar amount. The next report is a relatively new report, and that includes more detail, so they're really kind of duplicative reports. And at some point in the near future, we'll request input from the board on which of the two reports, uh, the board prefers.
Okay, 'cause, and then I was like, why are we paying water, lead, public schools, it didn't make sense to me.
And we're happy to respond to those questions, if they could be emailed ahead of time, then we can bring you the answer to, uh, to the board.
All right, I just asked, 'cause I wanted the tax base to see their government in action. Um, so, yeah, I, that's why I asked now, so thank you.
Okay, and Liz, were you able to take notes of those questions that trustee Bowen had, he wanted, okay, if you could get those to Mr. Johnson, so the board can get a, uh. Or Mr. Bowen can get a clarification on those questions.
The board.
I do have the answer to one of your questions, uh, right now. On the last page of the possible new payment report, uh, report. Near the top, you can see Waterfleet Public School, about the fourth line down. And then the description on this is girls' basketball summer league. B-ball, it's either baseball or basketball at Waterfleet.
So that looks like a term next year, one of the summer camps?
Uh, it sounds like it might have been a summer camp since this was a May twenty-one payment.
All right, any other questions, Thomas, concerns from the board regarding the monthly financial report, staff report F three? And yes, so, so the questions could be sent to the, the board, even though they're missing one question. Any other questions regarding the budget? Just giving everybody time. All right, if there are no other questions at this time. We'll allow secretary Tripplett to follow the role for the vote.
President Robinson.
Yes.
Vice president Bradley.
Yes.
Secretary Tripplett, yes. Treasurer Creighton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowen.
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan.
Yes.
Trustee Rocket Martin. Motion carried.
All right, next we have staff report F four, Mr. Johnson, the non-represented employee pay scale agenda.
Thank you, the reason for board consideration, when the new employee pay structure was presented for board approval last month. There was an unintentional omission, my mistake. Facts analysis, while formatting the recently approved employee pay structure, uh, for the June twenty-two meeting. The following note was inadvertently omitted from one section of the report, the administrator, directors, and supervisor section. And that, uh, line was, or that, that section was potential salary additions, these are. Recommended payments above and beyond the expected degree specified in the pay structure. For an earned second master's degree in a related field, fifteen hundred dollars per year. For an earned education specialist degree, two thousand dollars per year. And for an earned doctorate degree, two thousand five hundred dollars per year. And the degree stipends would be prorated for partial work years, and they could not be, and cannot be compounded. For example, an employee who has earned an education specialist degree and also an earned doctoral degree. Would receive the stipend for only the doctorate degree. And, um, just to confirm, the recently approved non-represented employee pay structure does not apply to any of the chiefs. And as this new employee pay structure is implemented this school year, this fiscal year. Some additional refinements to the new pay scale may be recommended downstream, including but not limited to. Uh, the addition of possibly newly created positions, as those may be recommended. Policy reference is sixty-five ten, payroll authorization. And the recommended action is that the board approve the following addendum as listed below.
All right, can I have a motion to approve staff report F four?
Make a motion to approve staff report F four.
Okay, so the motion was made by vice president Bradley and supported by treasurer Creighton. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding staff report F four?
I, I look at staff report F four, I guess just when I looked at the actual presentation of, of the pay scale. And not just, not just this particular addendum, when I looked at it, I did have, uh, when you look at the job description. And I, I, um, I have some concerns, when you look at the census here in Benton Harbor, and you look at some of the, uh, when you look at the percentage of people who have masters. What a percentage of people who have PhDs and those types of things, and, and, and how these, uh, um. Job descriptions change. Um. It's like just changed a lot. And so, I think that, you know, I, I don't have any problem supporting this, but I, I definitely would like to. Um. Have some more conversation, I get some more clarification, I did, I wanted to sit down with you and, um, Dr. Townsley, so I will get. Get you, Dr. Townsley, I can ask you questions, 'cause I have some questions. Thank you.
Thank you, secretary Tripplett, the question that I have, I probably should have asked at our last meeting, but. What is the process for actually determining the pay? Because in a previous job that I had, I had to go to the C E O and make a suggestion for the salary based on the qualifications of that staff. She decided yes or no, based on the supplement that I wanted to provide, so is that a similar process for H R? I'm not sure if that would be permitted, Johnson, or the scale, as far as like, who determines the additional supplemental salary?
So the supplemental salary is determined based on facts, it's pretty.
So the supplemental salary is determined based on facts is pretty?
I can hear you.
The supplemental salary is, is pretty much cut and dry because either they do have those additional degrees or employees do not. However, where our employees paced, placed on a pay scale is a collaborative effort. We take into account the person's experience, prior experience in a similar position. And typically, if a person is starting out in that position, we will place them on the starting level. However, let's say we hire a principal with fifteen years of experience, we do not necessarily discount that, then it is a conversation between me and the CFO and we try to, to, uh, come up to a reasonable, um, agreement with a candidate. Several factors are involved. So yes, also, one of the factors is our ability to recruit for that certain position, meaning, um, if a position is really difficult to recruit for, um, the candidate may frankly have more leverage in negotiating, uh, a higher pay. Also depends how long was the position open, it is just so many different factors, but we collaborate on it.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns from the board regarding Staff Report F four? All right, hearing none. Secretary Tripoli, can you please?
President Robinson?
Yes.
Vice President Bradley?
Yes.
Secretary Tripoli, yes. Treasurer Creighton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowen?
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan?
Yes, sir.
Trustee Rocket Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so next on the agenda, we have Staff Report H one. However, I would like to touch base with my board to see, are you guys okay with pushing through, or do we need a small recess for bathroom breaks or anything like that? Right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, great. So what I'm gonna ask is for a motion to amend the agenda to allow for a recess of ten minutes.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda for recess for ten minutes.
All right, so the motion has been made by Vice President Bradley, is there support?
There is.
All right, any questions, comments, or concerns? Secretary Tripoli, can you just call a quick vote, make sure everybody's okay with a quick recess?
President Robinson?
Yes.
Vice President Bradley?
Yes.
Secretary Tripoli, yes. Treasurer Creighton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowen?
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan?
Yes.
Trustee Rocket Martin? Ten minutes.
All right, so it is currently seven forty-six PM according to my clock. Our meeting, our meeting, seven forty-seven according, according to my clock. We will take a brief ten-minute recess and we will restart our meeting at seven fifty-seven prime.
I put on my breath.
I feel the exact same way y'all talking about, uh, I feel the same way. That's why I blocked you on Facebook, for that reason right there.
PM, we are on staff report H1. And Ms. Gill, you have the floor.
Give me, here we go. Submitting for board consideration to approve the employment of staff in accordance with the revised school code and other general laws of Michigan. Facts and analysis. It is recommended that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation for hire of the following personnel. Kimberly Godas, restorative justice specialist at FPE. Recommended action that the Benton Harbor area schools Board of Education votes to approve the employment of the aforementioned staff.
All right, is there a motion to approve staff report H1?
Support.
Okay, the motion has been made by Vice President Bradley, is there support? Okay, so the motion has been made by Vice President Bradley and supported by Trustee Rocket Martin that we approve staff report H1. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the board regarding staff report H1?
I have a question, where do we find the requirement for the restorative justice specialist? Can you tell me what was required, what was the minimum requirement for you to be hired for that position?
Yes, give me a second, I can't off the top of my head, but I can pull it up.
Thank you.
Okay, I will go to Mr. Bowen while Ms. Gill works on the response, Secretary Triplet.
Um, it's great to see that you guys are hiring for restorative justice. My question is, did we look into the district at potential employees that could have been transferred or given this opportunity? And also, how do I say this, and please forgive me for not politically correct.
Getting a little nervous. I think you got me a little nervous out of it.
Yeah, I'm trying to be, are they equipped to deal with inner-city African-American youth? Because a lot of times, people can have these degrees, they can have the qualifications. But when they're listening with little JoJo and little Bobby, the little Bobby I know that stays in hiding pockets will beat you up and chew you out. Whereas, they know people that are in the community that have the same skills and that has relationships. In the community. Is this staff, a staff member in the community, or is she somebody that we're bringing in from the outside? And does she have the skills in the set, I mean, she could have the skills and everything on paper. But is she equipped, that's what I'm basically asking. Is she culturally competent?
The President Robinson, can I respond?
You can, I would just like to.
So, that, that's a good question.
I would like to add a side note to reflect that not all children from Highland.
Oh, true, sorry. But I'm just, you know, our city, our youth, let's look at, all right, let's be honest. And we've had had youth that have been fighting, that are getting killed and everything. If Savannah comes in this community, does not know it, and she comes in here, it's like you've watched the movie Freedom Riders, basically.
So, that, that is not only an important point, that is a fact of our district. We, in each job, that is one of the, one of the qualifications that people have comfort level with, with demographic, demographics like ours. But also during the interview process, one of the items that candidates are evaluated on, it's, we call it a right fit for our district. So, that, they're evaluated now. Having said that, nobody here, nobody on any of our interviewing committees can actually look into the person's soul. We can base our judgment, or, or people can be rated based on the qualifications they bring and the type of answers that they provide during the interview process. That's what I can tell you. Being the right fit for our district is a very important point. And we, that is definitely at the forefront of our mind. That, that, that's all I can tell you, we can only judge based on the information we have. Past that, and I don't know that anybody on this planet can actually provide information and say, hey, this person is, is the right fit, because I can tell you it, let, let me just stop there.
I just, I mean, hear me out, when you go to Myers or Walmart, this, one time I was in Walmart and I didn't see, the superintendent didn't see me, but I seen him in his basketball shorts, you know, he's an everyday human. When you don't have people reflective or live in the community or have that relationship. Back in the day when I was going to school, Ms. Wiggins would call, not Ms. Wiggins, Ms. Williams would call my mom and say, Deborah, your son is cutting up. My mom would say, go ahead and whip him, but that was back in the day, but, you know, we're living in a, a unique time where you can have people that can have the nicest answers and the politically correct words and the soft skills and empathetically, they train you to do this stuff. But if we're not hiring local people from 49022 that have relationships, I'm afraid next year we'll be voting on replacing or hiring somebody else. That's all I'm gonna say, I'm gonna keep my comment.
So, you're, you're right, that, that, that's, nobody here disagrees with that whatsoever. As I was pulling the qualif, I do want to say that we had two of those positions open. Three people interviewed for those two positions and they were hired. Based on, based on their interview, their knowledge of restorative justice, based on what they brought to the table. It is, we definitely, and I have shared that numerous times in the Human Resources Committee, people from Benton Harbor are given a preference. People of color are given preference in our district. We, we look to hire people who represent our community. However, our interviewing process needs to bring out other qualifications that they would bring to the job, merely being from Benton Harbor is not enough. I hope that is clear. Trustee Triplet, I just pulled up the, the minimum qualifications. Reference a bachelor's degree, minimum three years of experience working in an urban setting. And then essential duties and responsibilities, designs and implements a restorative justice framework. That person needs to be able to articulate something about restorative justice, how will that, how will that tie into the, into the lives of our children in a school setting? How would that be tied to academics and everything else we are MTSS and everything else we're trying to move the district towards? So, all of those things are important, that's what I can say.
So, I have another question. So, when you, when you go through and you identify, so we have people, this is a bachelor's degree position. Right of assignment, people that have been vested in this community, master degree, wasn't even afforded an opportunity to even go forth in the process. Do you, does the chief of school, or do you send the notices out to people once they are hired, whether or not they're going to be a part of the, the team? Who sent the notice to the individuals to let them know whether or not they've been accepted or they've been rejected? Is it from HR, does that come from you, or does that come from the chief of school?
So, that depends, usually that comes from Human Resources, unless, if, if it's somebody who, who, let's say, the chief of schools recruited specifically for that position and they ended up not getting it. It's just, it's just a more polished way for her to send the response. But as a general rule, we do send automated responses from the system.
So, the chief, if, you saying if the chief of school recruited this individual, then she would send the response saying no? Or yes?
I'm saying in general, I'm not, are you referring to a certain, I'm not, I'm not familiar with.
I'm asking a question. When we have a position, who responds to the candidate? Either saying yea or nay?
Typically, the.
Does HR or the chief of school?
And my response is, it depends. Usually, it is, the response comes from Human Resources.
Thank you.
Madam President, I have a question. Yes, you have the Chair Treasurer Creighton.
Have we, I see that this, this person is going potentially to Fair Plains. Do we have a principal identified?
Fair Plains E.
Oh, Fair Plains E. Okay. Well, I still, my question, do we have a principal for? Okay, nevermind.
I'll write your question down for you. Okay. All right, any other questions specific to staff report H1? All right, Secretary Triplet, hearing none, can you please call the role for staff report H1?
President Robinson?
Yes.
Vice President Bradley?
Yes.
Treasurer Creighton? Treasurer Creighton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowen?
No.
Trustee Buchanan?
Yes.
Trustee Rocket Martin?
Yes.
Secretary Triplet, no. Motion carried.
All right, next on the agenda is staff report H2. Ms. Gill?
Submitting for board consideration to approve the employment of staff in accordance with the revised school code and other general laws of Michigan. Facts and analysis, it is recommended that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation for hire in the hire of the following personnel. Chelsea Clark, art teacher at MLK. Recom-
Go ahead.
Recommended action that the Benton Harbor area schools Board of Education votes to approve the employment of the aforementioned staff.
All right, is there a motion to approve staff report H2?
So moved.
All right, the motion has been made by Secretary Triplet and supported by Trustee Buchanan. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding staff report H2? Hearing none, Secretary Triplet, can you please call the vote?
Trustee, I mean, President Robinson?
Yes.
Vice President Bradley?
Yes.
Secretary Triplet, yes. Treasurer Creighton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowen?
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan?
Yes.
Trustee Rocket Martin, motion carried.
All right, next on the agenda, we have staff report H3. Ms. Gill?
Submitting for board consideration. Hold on, I'm in H4, give me a second, my computer. Submitting for board consideration to approve the employment of staff in accordance with the revised school code and other general laws of Michigan. Facts and analysis, it is recommended that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation for hire of the following personnel. John Drumlee, restorative justice specialist at Fair Plains Middle School. Recommended action that the Benton Harbor area schools Board of Education votes to approve the employment of the aforementioned staff.
Is there a motion to approve staff report H3?
A motion that we have. A so moved.
All right, so the motion has been made by Trustee Rocket Martin, is there, thank you for the support?
Support.
The motion has been made by Trustee Rocket Martin and supported by Vice President Bradley that we approve staff report H3. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding staff report H3?
Madam President?
You have a floor, Treasurer Creighton.
Yeah, so, um, I guess my initial question, do we have a principal name? And I'm only asking that because I know that when we were hiring for the high school, we wanted the principal to have the autonomy in filling the staff, and so I just wondered, you know, was that same respect given to this particular building? Um, principal, since the building principal is vacant? Or do we have an intern, or who, who is actually?
That's, that's a great question, uh, no, we do not have a, oh, I'm sorry, can I answer?
Yes.
We do not have an interim name, nor do we have a high school, excuse me, a middle school principal name yet. And I'll be honest with you, it's slim pickings with regards to candidates applying for our middle school principal job. Now that I'm back, my goal is to kind of hit the ground for the rest of this month to recruit a middle school principal and some reputable schools and reputable administrators that I know to see if they'd be interested in applying. It is possible we may have an interim by August, I'm trying to let the process play out. I think we, within the last two weeks, received only one more additional application. And just in general, they don't meet the requirements of a, of a middle school principal at the moment. So, we're looking for the right candidate, I don't want to desperately hire anybody to be the principal of any school in our district. So, currently, we do not have a middle school principal. It is possible that I will be naming an interim middle school principal if we can't find one by the top of August.
Okay. My question, I don't think it was anybody else's, but my question is, what, what effort, and this is just because I do not know, I doubt it, but we do. But what do we do as, as a relation to recruitment? I know COVID has been difficult.
Yeah.
But what, what do we do beyond websites? Do we, I'm sure we probably do like the other.
Yeah. We literally posted everywhere, and I was reading the article today. This, is, this critical shortage is hitting a district like Benton Harbor the most. Because when we even made an offer to a high school principal, they say, I know, I'm good, you know, decide to go another direction. It's just, it's a tough time, it's a real tough time to retain or to recruit and attract highly qualified individuals to lead our students. And I won't just give anybody that opportunity to be a principal at a school where they're leading young people, our precious possession. So, right now, we don't have, we don't have a front runner at all. And it's, it's, it's really, the pool is non-existent at this point. So, the additional effort will be me making personal phone calls to superintendent, personal phone calls to sitting administrators to see if they'd be interested in applying. And I've had some conversations previously, and just some people are just not interested yet, so I haven't got the right person yet.
Any other questions or comments regarding staff report H3? Now that COVID's up, maybe we can start hitting the job fair. We'll have our own job fair. Okay, Secretary Triplet, when you read the staff report H3?
President Robinson?
Yes.
Vice President Bradley?
Yes.
Treasurer Creighton?
No.
Trustee Bowen?
No.
Trustee Buchanan?
Yes.
Trustee Rocket Martin?
Yes.
Secretary Triplet, no, motion carried.
All right, next on the agenda, we have staff report H4.
Submitting for board consideration to apply, to, to approve the employment of staff in accordance with the revised school code and other general laws of Michigan. Facts and analysis, it is recommended that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation for hire of the following personnel. Ashley Adderbury, teacher in training in kindergarten. Recommended action that the Benton Harbor area schools Board of Education votes to approve the employment of aforementioned staff.
Is there a motion to approve staff report H4?
So moved.
Support?
The motion has been made by Secretary Triplet and supported by Vice President Bradley. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding staff report H4? Hearing none, Secretary Triplet, can you please call the vote?
President Robinson?
Yes.
Vice President Bradley?
Yes.
Treasurer Creighton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowen?
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan?
Yes.
Trustee Rocket Martin?
Yes.
Secretary Triplet, yes, motion carried.
All right, staff report H4 has passed, next on the agenda, we have staff report H5.
Submitting for board consideration to approve the employment of staff in accordance with the revised school code and other general laws of Michigan. Facts and analysis, it is recommended that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation for hire of the following personnel. Frank Harrell, teacher, third grade at MLK. Recommended action that the Benton Harbor area schools Board of Education votes to approve the employment of the aforementioned staff.
Is there a motion to approve staff report H5?
So moved.
Support?
The motion has been made by Secretary Triplet and supported by Vice President Bradley. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding staff report H5? Secretary Triplet, can you please call the vote?
President Robinson?
Yes.
Vice President Bradley?
Yes.
Secretary Triplet, yes. Treasurer Creighton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowen?
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan?
Yes.
Trustee Rocket Martin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, awesome, so that is staff report H5, one last report for higher. Next, we're on staff report H10, for separation of employment.
Reason for board consideration, a list of employees whose employment relation with the district is or will be separated is submitted to the board each month. Facts and analysis, it is recommended that the Board of Education votes to approve the separation of employment of the following staff. Policy ref, policy reference 4140. Rachel Jones, music teacher at FPE. Recommended action that the Benton Harbor area schools Board of Education votes to accept the separation of employment of the aforementioned staff.
Is there a motion to approve staff report H6?
So moved. Support?
The motion has been made by Trustee Rocket Martin and supported by Vice President Bradley. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding staff report H6? Okay, so let me, I'm gonna go with Bowen. Next, we'll do Bradley, then we'll have Triplet. Creighton, did you have a question or no? Okay, Trustee Bowen, you have a board.
Um, just out of curiosity, if it's possible, and I should have started this earlier, can we get on these resignations, their start date and their finish date, when they started with the district?
We could.
Pardon me?
We could.
I think that would be vital, I, I just, you know, for personal reference, what's the tenure, are they sure, are we just doing temporary? You, I hope I'm making sense with that. It's good for our data collection, that's all.
I can, I can tell you that now, if, if you care. The teacher has been with us this year, only, one year.
Okay.
She, she's, has been with us one year at our district. Not necessarily, right.
So, out of curiosity, with a lot of the resignations, is that normal, typical?
So, a lot of resignations, these, specifically, I really am not able to go in detail on a personal level. However, I will say that a lot of people are moving out of the area. Several of the resignations we've had in the last month, actually, a couple of them moved out of the country. One moved to, I don't know, somewhere in the south. One moved to Luddington. It's a lot of people are just, have life events that are, that are not in, in our control. That's what I can offer, and that is the case for those presented today.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Secretary Triplet?
Yes, I noticed, um, it's coming up again that we've, that we've lost a couple of teachers at our early, early at, in our building. And, um, I remember, um, first of all, what type of recruitment, I know, probably, probably difficult to find music teachers, but I remember, we have a contingency plan in place. We had one music teacher, Ms. Bloom was our music, was our art teacher, and she traveled around from building to building. The music teacher that we had would come and rotate and make sure that everybody got music at those particular levels, because I don't know if you'll be able to fulfill the position that quick. But I was very concerned, and even with the, with the term resignation, and I know you can't talk about personnel issues, but, um, in, in the exit, do you have, do you have an exit interview with, with the people that are resigning?
Absolutely.
And you take documentation, you have documentation?
Absolutely, so I should say, exit interviews are voluntary, so people choose, may choose to complete them or not, however, an exit interview is sent, and every person leaving the district is offered an opportunity to do it in person or fill out a form. an opportunity to do it in person or, um, f, fill out a form. Yes.
So like with their, with their principals or what do you have, you know, relationship having been established and what have you? This has been a concern of mine forever. You know, uh, with people resigning from the district, just like with parents making a decision to take their kids out of the district uh, for various reasons. And, and do we have documentation as to, because we just make an easy assumption why people are taking their kids out of the district or why people are resigning. This is not normal. I don't think that people think, I, 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 you know, from what I've seen, since I've just been on this board, is very disturbing to me. Uh, but the turnaround and then to go back to data that I pulled for two or three years. You know, uh, is very concerning. Um, and then information that we're starting to get in conversations that being sent to the board is very concerning. So that's why I'm asking, what type of data do we have? That says, when these people are leaving this place, this space, why are these people leaving this district at such an alarming rate? And if there's any, because it might be me, they might say, I want to leave this district because I don't like the fact that Mr. Triplet is on the board of education, he is just not any other. If it is me, it doesn't matter who it is, we need to know.
We can certainly share that. That has been shared in the past, not with this, but last year, I do know, actually, there were charts, pie charts that we shared with, uh, uh, with the HR committee, uh, so we can definitely have those updated and share the information.
Thank you so very much.
All right, next we have Vice President Bradley.
Um, it was just, um, I think, uh, Secretary Triplet did touch on a few things with my question, so there was just a concern about me, two music teachers um, leaving that, I just wanted to, you know, that's a concern for me because, you know, I was in the music program, I was a major student in this district, and so just wanted to make sure we had somebody coming in to cover that, because I think, you know, music education is very vital, especially to our, um, early age students.
So, I do want to point out that this past school year was the first year that we offered electives such as music, art, and P at every building. That was not the case before. Buildings shared music teachers in the past. So, uh, with these resignations, um, there's nothing I can say. People get married, people that, that I, I don't want to say young people, but those are just facts of life. When people move out, there's nothing we can do. As far as our, we are actively and aggressively recruiting, and I can share some of the tactics. When I tell you we're aggressively looking, we're literally stalking people throughout the state. Uh, to, and, and going after them and inviting them to apply. Teacher shortage is real nationally, especially in the state of Michigan, and it's affecting us. So, uh, recently, the Maryland, um, M D has enacted, um, an opportunity for teachers whose, whose certifications have expired due to whatever reason. Sometimes people went on maternity leave, didn't, or didn't renew their certification, went to another profession, so their certifications have expired. M D has extended a program to them, grandfathering them in and allowing them to, to be certified for a year, giving them a grace period so that they could work as teachers and be covered. Um, as a result of that program, we have access to a database of anybody who used to be a teacher who is now applying or has benefited from that program. We have a whole list of names, which we have gone and contacted those people individually and showing them opportunities in our district. As a matter of fact, one of the people who, uh, just got voted in, Frank Harold, is one of the people who we, he never applied, but we contacted him, asked him to apply, and then he went through our process and got hired as a third grade teacher. He is moving into the district from across the state. So, um,
Yep, Treasurer Creighton? Wouldn't be right for me to ask that. But, um, so I just wondered, does, does any of the resignations affect, um, our summer school? So do we have any individuals that are resigning or leaving our district that's working currently, um, in any capacity?
Um, to tell you the truth, I would need to look at that. I, I just don't, I don't think so, but I-
Do you have these programs offered in summer school?
So all of our teachers and all of our parents have been afforded the opportunity this year, if they wanted to, to work summer school, and I can tell you, I can pull up the schedule, I just-
You're asking if we have music in summer school?
Yeah, I just wonder if that is-
So, I, it, no, I, I want to say no. All teachers are teaching math and reading and such, regardless of if they are, normally if they teach art or something else.
Thank you.
But I do want to preface that, please don't hold me to it, this is not my area of expertise. I could tell you if they work in summer school or not, then.
All right, any other questions? Um, Rocket Martin?
You know, in the past, um, as building and administration, we were also, if we could have, if we, they were, the discipline that they would find music teachers for our building, we were allowed to contract, contractual services with, uh, people, local people that we knew that, uh, taught music or, you know, had music backgrounds that would be willing to come in to do music with their, our students. I can remember, um, having people come in to work with our kids in music. Whenever there's a shortage of money, the arts are always cut the music, the jewelry arts. So as a result, teachers don't go into music. They don't do a lot of art because they know those are the first jobs that are usually cut out when there's a lack of funds. But we were allowed to do contracted services with, uh, millions of people. I can remember David, you know, working in a school who, who has a, a rich history of music, you know? So is that something that we can still probably look into for our buildings?
So unfortunately, we're not able to place people in teaching positions unless they have a certification or some type of a permit. Now, if people are eligible for a permit in any way, and we have been able to, to exploit the, the, I, I want to say, the, the new, the new legislation and new requirements. Uh, but there are still requirements. We go ahead and obtain teaching permits for people, whether they're daily permits or, uh, full year permits for them to be able to, to actually be in a teaching position. Now, what-
They weren't like teaching, you know, they were like certified or whatever, but they weren't necessarily teaching and working in a school.
Yes, so however, starting with last year, we were able to find funding so that those positions would be funded. And we would be able to hire people at the full teaching contract under the collective bargaining agreement, and they would also be eligible for benefits, which is more attractive. Um, feel free, if you know of any music or, or art teachers, please encourage them to apply. Uh, we're actively looking, uh, for, uh, new hires.
I, I'll be getting in contact with you. There was a, a, a music teacher who reached out to me, who is certified in the state of Michigan, who lives right over there.
Please do.
Um, and, uh, said that she tried to get in contact down here to know about, but I'll give you that information.
Did that person apply? Because I have not seen the application.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you the information, and then you can check.
Okay.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, I think we just about, most of us have said, have added comments for staff report H six. I, I have made efforts to, this is just random, reach out to pass among the people that are interested in coming back to the district, so I just want to make sure, I think as we mentioned earlier, the board has the power to recruit as well, and so a lot of us have the history, so, and the attachment to the district, we know what teachers require, what they call, who's qualified. So we can make the effort to assist the district with, um, getting our targets to return home. So, no other discussions, Secretary Triplet, can you call the vote for staff report H six?
President Robinson?
Yes.
Vice President Bradley?
Yes.
Treasurer Creighton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowen?
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan?
Yes.
Trustee Rocket Martin?
Yes.
Trustee. Secretary Triplet, yes, motion carried.
All right, next is staff for H seven.
So, yes, thank you. I just want to say, I'm looking at the, at the applicant tracking system now. I do not see any applicants for a music teacher, and we have one, we have two. So please do, please reach out to your friends and tell them to tell their friends. Uh, H seven, reason for board consideration, a list of employees whose employment relationship with the district is or will be separated is submitted to the board each month. Facts and analysis, it is recommended that the board of education votes to accept the separation of employment of the following staff. Claire Salinas, music teacher at DEC. Recommended action that the Benton Harbor area schools board of education votes to accept the separation of employment of the aforementioned staff.
All right, can I have a motion to approve staff for H seven?
So move.
Support?
Motion has been made by Secretary Triplet and supported by Vice President Bradley. I love when you all do that, and I don't have to call for it, thank you so much. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the board regarding staff report H seven? All right, let's proceed. Hearing none, Secretary Triplet, can you please call the vote?
President Robinson?
Yes.
Vice President Bradley?
Yes.
Secretary Triplet, yes, Treasurer Creighton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowen?
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan? Trustee Rocket Martin? Motion carried.
All right, staff for H eight.
Reason for board consideration, a list of employees whose employment relationship with the district is or will be separated is submitted to the board each month. Facts and analysis, it is recommended that the board of education votes to accept the separation of employment of the following staff. Um, Olivia Dodge, teacher, special education at the high school.
All right, is there a motion to approve staff for H eight?
So move.
Support?
The motion has been made by Secretary Triplet and supported by Vice President Bradley. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding staff report H eight?
Um, Madam President?
Yeah.
I, I don't know if this is the appropriate time. Actually, I'll wait till more business.
Okay.
But it, it was just about, um, yeah, okay, sorry.
All right, any questions, comments, or concerns regarding, uh, staff report H eight? You have a question? Okay, Secretary Triplet?
President Robinson?
Yes.
Vice President Bradley?
Yes.
Secretary Triplet, yes. Treasurer Creighton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowen?
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan?
Yes.
Trustee Rocket Martin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, so next on the agenda, we're teaching and learning, but there's no items for Dr. Shelton. Next we have Mr. Miller. Do you have a presentation to be here?
No items to report.
Okay, no items to report. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have old business. Treasurer Creighton, did you put under old business or was it new business?
Um, I, I'm gonna say old business. No, I think it, it wanted to be old business, it had to be an agenda item for the town.
Something we kind of discussed before.
So, no, maybe new business.
All right, so any old business comment, any old business? All right, next we have new business.
I have some new.
Okay.
Um, I was just, um, there's an article that's out, um, and I'm gonna pull it up on my cell phone. It just talks about some schools in our area and ways that they use their CARES money um, to retain teachers and, and, you know, following, it just kind of came to my mind, I remember, um, watching it. Um, it was recently on the news, but as we think about, you know, the amount of bleeding that we have um, from an HR perspective and also a recruitment perspective, um, I think it might be something to potentially look into ways that, I know we have a lot of grants and stuff coming in, and we can look at ways to spend CARES money to provide incentives for teachers, you know, um, just based on the fact that we don't have to now retrain them, get them reacquainted. Um, if we can do that, um, I know that we can't, you know, do a whole lot, but if we can figure out ways to use CARES money or one of the money, um, grants that we receive, or potentially look for the grant to help put some dollars back in our teachers' pockets. Um, you know, to just thank them for not making us have to now go back out and recruit, do a bunch of background checks and potentially find people that would be a good fit. I think that would be great for us as a district. I think it'd be a good recruitment um, effort and also retention effort.
So do you think it'd be difficult for you to try to locate that article?
No, I have it right here.
Can you just forward that to the board?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that.
President Robinson?
Yes.
May I, um,
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, piggyback off of Treasurer Creighton. I think, um, uh, thank you for sharing that. Um, I have been in contact with our executive cabinet, as a matter of fact, of looking for opportunity to potentially in the future offer, uh, what is called retention bonuses. In my previous district of Wayne Westland Community School District, retention bonuses were offered to educators who came back, and the retention bonus was dispersed in September. Um, so my goal is to look to do that same program here. Obviously, the goal is monies. I will ensure that we look at our, uh, CARES Act or the ESAR fund to see if that's permissible to do. Uh, but a lot of superintendents are trying to see how we can put some of that money in the pockets of our educators. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a question in response to what you just said, Dr. Talbot. That, um, the retention bonus, would that be something that would fall within our employee pay scale, or is that, would that be considered something separate?
Uh, I'm, I'm exploring what that looks like for Benton Harbor area schools. It was already implemented in my previous district. I just need to see how that was, how it, that became so, so.
Sounds like a good idea. I mean, it's just from the initial, we want to show our teachers we appreciate them. We, you know, as noted, we have teachers that come and find other opportunities and leave our district, hope we could get that stability and show people we care and appreciate it, and that might allow us to kind of help with that issue. Go ahead, Secretary.
Yeah, we have, and we have teachers who have, who have been here twenty and thirty years and have stood the test of time often, looked over, neglected, uh, when it's time for things to happen on their behalf, it never comes their way. And, 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 and that's, that's, that's another thing too. And I think it's a great, uh, thing for trustee Bowen to even ask, you know, um, how long have these people actually worked in this district? Especially when you have people who have worked in this district for years, and then when it's time for them to apply for these positions, they know, they don't get the opportunity. This is not just something that we heard, it's something that we know. And we are clear, we are very clear on it. So it, it, it's very, very important that it is understood that when those types of questions are asked, we're talking about, we're gonna keep our people. We know our people, we know the capabilities of our people. And we don't need anybody's dignity spared at any point, on any level, by anyone. Especially in the midst of a bunch of, uh, in my, well, anyhow. But yeah, so because, you know, we have, we have here, we have, we have someone who is re, resigning uh, from the music division right now. Um, let's put in a resignation. But she's getting paid right now as a summer school teacher. The question was asked because, when the question was asked, already knew. But we have a person that is working for summer school right now, and she's resigning from the district. And so, I mean, those are the kinds of things, and you've only been here for a year or two. You know, those are the kinds of things that are very disturbing, concerning, and people can take a profligate if they want to. It doesn't matter, because when people leave here, we still live here. It's our family, these are our family, these are our children, these are our nieces, these are our nephews, these are our cousins, these are classmates, friends, grandchildren. This is, this is our community. And so, you know, how those types of things, people are, and then there's a list of, we have. I'll let it go. Thank you.
All right, so Treasurer Creighton, did you, you go ahead, you sent that to us already?
I did.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I, I know I said teachers, but it might be good to, because I know we have a lot of support staff and others too, so.
Yes.
I, you know, I kind of got a couple side eyes, but. I was just saying staff here.
Yes.
You know, just kind of.
Yes.
So for new business, I actually have something, I sent it out, I know I sent you guys out quite a bit, but we attended, uh, myself, Secretary Triplet, trustee Rocket Martin, and trustee Bowen had an opportunity to attend on Friday a presentation from Manchester Bigwell about services that they can potentially bring to the community to help with some of the tech and CTE related needs of our students. And so I sent out that PowerPoint to the board for those who have not attended. Um, the meeting was a meeting of various leaders and stakeholders of the community. Everyone had an opportunity to ask questions and give feedback. So I want to ensure that you all have an opportunity to look over that PowerPoint, but also express that Ms. Adams, Commissioner Adams is interested in providing a special presentation to the board specifically regarding that information. But I do want you all to, to have an opportunity to look at the presentation, so if we are interested in having her talk, you know, come in and talk to us. in having her talk, you know, come in and talk to us, we at least know our beginning question, and that's some information that I can get sent to her. So if you guys could check that email, it's a form from me, the title should be Manchester Bigwell. Um, and Secretary Triplet, I know you, you were in attendance, I, you guys have probably noticed about me, I'm mirenate quite a bit. Liz will know, it drives her crazy, so I never, I wouldn't express how I feel, but it, it seems like a good program and it's definitely a need, and it appears to be a company consulting the city on how to develop a model that works for us. However, what I will say is the meeting, there was a lot of opinions received from other community leaders that in my opinion overshadowed the information that I could have gotten from Manchester, and so, I think it's, uh, probably benefited us to maybe have some follow-up opportunities for questions. Go ahead, Treasure Creighton.
Um, I just want to, um, kind of remind us that we are in the business of educating children and in an effort to be clear, um, I did watch the PowerPoint, yeah, and I think it potentially be a great program, but you know, fortunately, we, you know, our students are our customers and at Walmart, they're not going to look to contract or potentially find services that Meyer. And so I'm going to say that, um, this would potentially be another way to outsource and take CTE opportunities from Benton Harbor High School and Benton Harbor area schools, um, so for me, that was one reason why, um, I did not attend. Um, I didn't want to kind of share that because I think it's important for everybody to go and get what it is that they need um, from different situations and presentations, but I think to be clear, you know, we are developing our CTE or redeveloping our CTE program, um, and if we Google, um, CTE in Bering County for nineteen ninety-nine, um, there's a whole framework that was laid out, um, we actually, they have the districts in our communities that receive services through us, and so I think, you know, there's some groundwork that's been done, um, I think we do have to look into how we can reestablish, and we talked about this in some little meetings, but how we can reestablish that CTE program. Um, I know that we saw that we, um, our director is in a new position now, I would like to know, you know, who's going to now take on that role and responsibility if we looked into that, but then look into how we can redevelop our own program versus, you know, being Meyer and looking at Walmart to give us services, you know, for sporting goods department or something, I think it's time, the time is now, we see, if nothing else, we see people around us that see opportunities and we basically guess, so as we're doing our strategic plan, as we're doing everything that we're doing, I think it's important to make sure that we stay focused on what it is that we're here to do and that, to provide education to our students in Benton Harbor and potentially in Bering County, and so, um, I think it's great, nothing against what they're doing, but, um, I, I do think it would be another way to outsource programs that we can have, we have the space, if nothing else, to provide the CTE opportunities. Um, we have the framework, it's not something that you can't find, because you can Google it, CTE Bering County, it was established in nineteen ninety-nine, um, and moving forward, there's something that can be done, so.
And I, and I want to, I'm gonna let Secretary Triplet go, I want to apologize because I didn't mean for this to actually begin a, uh, full discussion on the topic, because I know everybody hasn't had a chance to really review it, but it's very important to me that the board is aware, because this is a community conversation that's taking place, and so you could have anybody come up to you and ask you, what do you think about Manchester Bigwell, and so I want you all to at least have an understanding of what this is and, and this is potentially, um, a venture being pursued by the community at large, now let Secretary Triplet.
I, I guess I had a, a completely different understanding and, and, uh, experience with the presentation, and, uh, I just would definitely like to, uh, say to Commissioner Mary, um, Alice, um, she's been talking about this for ten years, I mean, just literally talking about this and, 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 and fighting for, on behalf of Benton Harbor and the young people in Benton Harbor, and so I definitely want to give a shout out to her for her persistence and for her to, you know, the way she stood it, I was very, 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 uh, impressed with it all. There's, um, there, there are a lot of things to learn about it, and I'm excited, but you know, just to have us at the table, to even have the invitation to come to the table, I wish even our, if our CTE director, our current CTE director would have had an opportunity to experience it, you know, to be a part of it, to get more information, and our superintendent was not back from vacation. Um, but, you know, to be able to just hear it and, and talk about it, because I think that there are a lot of different ways that we can make sure that we are educating our kids, and, um, and I, and I, and I, I agree with, uh, Treasure Creighton. Education is our number one priority, you know, by any means necessary, and so I, I do want to say, uh, Madam President, it was, it was a good, it was a good, uh, good, good thing, good presentation, good to see Trustee, uh, Bowen and Trustee Rocket there as well.
My first time in a room with all of the community leaders at once, quite the experience, but I, I got acclimated in very, very quickly, so I, I see the, I see the city, we're walking in and I know how to walk amongst them importantly, so I just want you all to be aware of what that topic is regarding, please go in and read the PowerPoint, um, you know, I did let Mayor Mohammed know, I'm, like I said, I'm a person that mirenates on things for a while, so I understand, I, it does seem to be a good program and I do see there's need, but I have not, uh, outwardly expressed how I view it or what I think to anyone necessarily, because I'm still determining that. You all to be aware and knowledgeable on what that conversation was about. All right, moving right along, any other new business?
Yeah, new business, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Trustee.
I've been waiting for a while, you know, um, I, sorry, let me get the post three up on my way. Um, I do think we as a board have to let the community know that we hear them, we see them, and we understand them, um, it's been petitions on Facebook, it's been YouTube videos of individuals that feel that we have treated them wrong, and I'm like, let the record, let's, I, I think we need to have a cultural investigation on all departments, the staff, what do they fear, it's a problem when your teachers that educate our children fear retaliation, or they fear that if they sneeze wrong, or they can't speak up for themselves, or if they apply for another job because they spoke up for themselves, that they're not going to get that opportunity for another job. They feel that they are being mistreated, they feel like they're being bullied, and we need a investigation, a survey, and let the record show, you know, I just was done with that investigation and the investigation came back like I'm clean. So if this stuff, these allegations that we're not looking into, and we're steadily letting them go on, we're doing a disservice to our taxpayers that elected us, I want us as a district, number one, to have a culture survey. What's the culture, are, why are teachers and staff and support staff feeling like they're living in fear, and if they're not, okay. But if something is happening, it needs to be checked and let the record show, if you're doing something clean and it comes back, well, it's on us. But if we continue to let this behavior exist, we're doing a disservice to the taxpayers, we're doing a disservice to our teachers, and we cannot expect for people to want to bring their kids back, so I think we as a board need to let the public know, we hear you, you voted for us, and we're gonna do what's necessary, and we enforce that a, a survey is done, investigation from an outside agency, investigate, it's embarrassing when you go on YouTube or when you go on Facebook, you see letters from the former principal or you see support staff. We gotta do something about this culture, now, hear me out, it's not just those two, I've heard it from plenty of other people. So, we can act like everything is peachy and cream when it's really dirt and sand, so let's, let's get, let's get rid of the malarkey, let's do what we need to do and make sure we're providing respect, dignity, and pride to our staff that educate our children. No one should have to live in fear of working, and if the records come back there clean and they're not doing something wrong, then let the record go, but if the record comes back that they are doing something wrong, we as a board, because we are known about it and the public knows about it, we need to be doing something, if we're not doing anything, we should not be sitting in these seats, thank you.
So Dr. Talbot, I know that, I can't remember how long this goes, so that's true, they were.
Yeah.
I asked you, do we have anything similar to like a cultural climate survey?
Yeah, there was no, uh, previous climate and culture survey here, I do, I can't reach out to, um, uh, when I was in my previous district, we had a survey done by the Hewlings Report, uh, which was a really good climate and culture survey. I do want to share the, um, letters that I, that the board received that were forwarded to me. Um, my job is to forward it through our, um, chain of command to the direct supervisor and address it. Um, I'm made aware of it, at the same time, board members are made aware of situations, um, and I believe in due process uh, for every individual that works here in Benton Harbor area schools, it just has to go through a process. Um, I was made aware while on vacation of a YouTube video, um, of someone who didn't work, that, work in our district this year. I think it was information from the last academic school year prior to the pandemic, so, you know, it, stuff is coming all over the place. I know the culture that, that I steward here in Benton Harbor area schools, I know my, um, team that works with me understand what the expectations are, uh, but I do understand that, uh, prior to my arrival in Benton Harbor area schools, um, I don't, I don't know where the culture was, but I, I just hear from all over the place, uh, where things were, where, you know, it, it's probably going, but my job is to ensure that everyone, student, families, um, um, staff, anybody that's associated with Benton Harbor area schools have a great experience all the way around, um, teaching profession, students, parents, customer service, that's high priority, um, so I'm happy to, to work on that, happy to, um, have a strategic plan that also spells that out and support that, and I'm happy to evaluate and see the return on investment on the resources you put in there. I think there's a question down there.
We had a follow-up question.
Yeah, I just want to say, I just want to say that it is, I understand that everybody has due process. When I first got elected, I was messaging to Shana, like to Shana, they're calling me, you know, I, I think, how do I say it? When I worked in corporate America, when my boss was away, the mouse came out and played, and we used to cut up, but when my boss was there, we knew how to do our best, we knew how to put our A game on, and I, I think a lot of stuff is not made up. It's real, these are our taxpayers, these are people that will call you at six in the morning, seven and eleven o'clock at night, and you, you, you hear their frustrations and they feel like they're invisible, and they feel like they're not heard by administration or if they have no freedom or protection, because if they speak out, they're there, and when I, there's, when they speak out, they feel like they're gonna lose their job, and it, no one should have to feel like that. So I understand the due process, I understand, you know, we can't just go by everything, but I do understand, it's not just those two. I think we need to do a full throttle investigation, and if the record comes back that you're clean, the best thing to be done is check and it comes back clean, that's all I have to say on that.
I'm, I wasn't sure, I know this question is regarding HR, I wasn't sure if Ms. Gill, as the chief of HR, had a response or was Dr. Talbot's response audition for you?
I would like to respond, those, those issues that Trustee Bowen's, um, presented are, are important. I do have a statement here that I would like to read. Our board policies prohibit unlawful discrimination and harassment. This includes discrimination in our employment practices. We enforce our policies when complaints are processed under the procedures stated in our policy. Those procedures are clearly stated, for example, you can see board policies thirty-one, twenty-two, and thirty-three, sixty-two as an example, they are listed on our website. If any current or former employees, if they believe that they have been, that they have a complaint under either of these or any other policies, please send the complaint to Human Resources with a copy to the superintendent. If the complaint is against Human Resources, please send it to the superintendent. If the complaint is against the superintendent, the complaint should be sent to the board, that is the appropriate procedure. The appropriate person will then be in touch to obtain more details. A workplace investigation is conducted when there is credible information that there may be significant wrongdoing, misconduct, harassment, or such. Please note that the district does not engage nor take action based on hearsay. Every credible complaint is properly and thoroughly investigating, investigated. We can demonstrate that all human resources-led investigations in the past two years have been fair and objective. Our documentation is tight. The district policies expressly prohibit retaliation toward any person who has either originated the complaint or participated in the investigation. Um, that's what I can say so far.
Madam President, can I respond to Ms. Gill? I think the issue is, how do I say this, right now, Donald Trump is telling people he won the presidency, and they believe it. So anyone can say what they want to say and believe it, but when you have more than enough people that are saying that there is a level of fear, it's retaliation, it's an issue. Now, we know how to fix policies, you know, I worked in corporate America and we knew how to tell a customer, um, I'm sorry, this isn't in your warranty, you know, you had that wiggle room, we know how to make policy work for us and make policy as beautiful as it sounds, but it is an underlying factor where people are coming to board members and not administration because they are fearful, if they weren't fearful, we would not be having this conversation. They're fearful to go to HR or administration because it's a fear of losing their job or being blackballed or being labeled. I don't see nothing wrong with us having an investigation, an outside investigation, I understand what board policy says, but I think it should be an outside investigation that's not affected with the HR department, administration, that comes in and see, and if we need to improve and get that spirit back and make people feel comfortable and safe, then by any means necessary, let's do that. But, like I said, we can say whatever we want to say, just like Donald Trump says he won the election, um, they say I was voting to sell land and we ain't even sold land, people believe it, and it takes one lie and it takes experience from other staff members to sell you, first, it's a level of fear, it's a level of retaliation, and if this stuff wasn't true, we would not be hearing about, and that's all I want us to look at as new businesses, let's get an outside agency in, let's check it, and let's make sure we're providing a world-class, safe environment, no matter as beautiful as policy is, beautiful as words, the facts of the matter is that teachers and staff feel that they cannot speak up, they fear for their jobs, it's a problem, and it should not be.
Okay, we're gonna go to Secretary Triplet and, um, not to rush him, I support the use of the fourth time. We have been quite well aware of that, well, some people probably said not so much, we're about nine, we'll round it up soon.
I, I personally don't need a response, uh, from HR or anyone, um, there is an ethical imperative that must take place. I will personally, as a member of the Board of Education, will be meeting with the super, with the president of the Board of Education to, uh, see what protocol is to do an investigation on these matters, and so, um, it's just, it's, it's just an ethical imperative that must take place, and this is not new, it's not new, we're not gonna play games, it's not new at all, this is only one phase of, and this cannot happen. In our school district, it cannot happen to our citizens, it cannot happen. in our school district. It cannot happen to our citizens. It cannot happen to our employees and it will not. And so once these, like trustee Bowman says, once the investigation is complete, then we'll be able to make the necessary adjustments without, so it won't be personal because it's not personal. But there is an ethical imperative that must take place and there is documentation. And so we will move forward. For me, as far as I'm concerned, I, I have, I have gone above and beyond not to even insert myself in anything, but as a board of education, when information is brought to this board of education and we do not act upon this, we are complicit and we can be sued. And these are some very serious allegations and they need to be investigated. So I bet that I will be speaking with the president and trying to get some direction on what direction we need to go because I do not want to be sued and I don't think that any of us have deserved that, that even coming our way. And there's more and more. And I think that it is important that people understand as elected officials that our citizenry contact us as trustee Bowman said. And being on the Board of Education to the citizens, there's a lot of times we can't say things. We cannot respond back to you on particular matter. But we get called repeatedly and we are aware of a lot of things that are going on. This is no, this, 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 that's what it is. That's what, that's what elected officials, that's what, that's how they, that's how their constituents get in contact with them and they let us know. I think that it is, as, as the superintendent said, due process is, is, is very, very important. It's, it's a must. As far as people reading up our policy and teaching up our policy and teaching out how to do our job, to me, it's professionally offensive. And I think people feel comfortable in doing that because it has happened several times because I have been on this board of education. Because regardless to what people may say or people may think, everybody in Benton Harbor does not fit in that category of not being able to read and comprehend and understand. This is a professional board. This, this board has degree individuals on this board, college degrees, master degrees on this board. And so it's offensive to make the assumption that we are not aware of what is happening in our community and in our school district. I'm gonna close with this. There is an ethical imperative that must take place. Thank you.
Madam President? So I just want to add a clarification. I think Ms. Gill was attempting to provide those politics for the public listening and not necessarily the
I just wanted to say, this was an example. It was my understanding when trustee Bowens started saying investigation, I thought he meant the individuals who wanted to file a complaint, but then later he clarified he wanted an outside investigation. Am I correct?
Yes, it needs to be a third.
We welcome, we welcome any outside investigation into any of the HR practices as we're quite proud of the work that has been done in the district in the last two years.
Treasure, right? Yes, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not trying to change this up. But yeah, under new business, someone mentioned, I don't know if it was the trustee or another superintendent, somebody said something about a culture and climate survey.
Yes, I have, we, we mentioned that.
And I remember in two thousand fifteen, I think sixteen, he did the my five or my five surveys on through the Health and Human Services Department of State Michigan. And it provided some good data on that with regard to culture and climate, safety, health, and wellbeing. And I think it's a free survey. So that might be something that we might want to look into with food services.
And the reason, the reason I mentioned is we, we do it at, we do it at the state. They send, we do survey at all times, of course, locally in office, but the state sends out surveys to state employees just to see what they think about the environment. You know, because we have retention issues as well. And so we want to try to fix the retention issues. We need to have the data behind why people are leaving. And if there's things internally that you can work on, it could be something that you're unaware of. So we, that's, you know, we, it's not fault of climate, climate, culture, survey, but they do surveys often just to get that feedback from the staff. So, and I can't remember what the conversation topic was, but I think I asked Dr. Townsley to email if you guys need it, but that's been so long.
No worries. I was gonna say, a lot of times a part of a strategic planning process, a survey is a part of that. So that may be.
Right on time. Throw that right in there.
Yep, yep, and, and a district.
All right. So we are gonna move it right along. This evening, we have open public comment. I'm gonna call, although I see no one. However, you will not say I have violated your rights. Is there anyone here for public comment?
Madam President, how does this work with us doing the Zoom and?
So they actually have to be, it's a live meeting. So in, so we go back, so essentially think about what the board looked like before COVID. If they want to participate in public comment in the meeting, they have to be in public. However, the notices gave people the opportunity to send questions in advance to Liz so that they could still get those questions answered that they have if they're unable to attend in person. And then there, each individual person is, we are giving an option of live viewing for those that don't feel comfortable coming in person to watch the board meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Not sending messages.
Oh, so yeah, Liz has received some messages through the chat. It's gonna be difficult for her to receive those because her computer is on the screen for sharing. And so sometimes your personal questions, you may not want the community to know. We don't want the community necessarily know questions that you have if they're not being asked in the public forum. So you want to make sure that you're sending those questions via email, which is on the agenda. You can do that before the meeting or after and then we'll use the same follow-up process. I actually anticipated that we would have more people in person today. So we are open for business, similar to how we were before COVID. So we invite the community to join us in our public meetings moving forward. The next one being July twenty-seventh, where we will be discussing the best of the potential demolition of buildings. We know the community has a lot to say. So please come in person to that meeting. And if not, you can send your questions to Liz. So no public comment. Next on the agenda, we have Dr. Townsley for superintendent announcements and comments.
Yes, I'm very excited to get started on this strategic plan. I think that's a major step forward for Benton Harbor area schools with stabilizing and revitalizing the education experience of students here in Benton Harbor area schools. Additionally, I'd like to send a major congratulations to three of our high school graduates who received scholarships through the Marion Community Foundation. Tyler Meeks received a scholarship through the Insurance Management Service for Benton Harbor Football. Starr Williams earned the St. Joe Class of nineteen seventy scholarship and Marlon Bowen earned the college, excuse me, the Coach U Scholarship. So major shout out to them young people and all young people going on to any post-secondary opportunity. We love that. We love to see you over the summer. My hope is to have our parent advisory committee up and running in August. I'll announce a sign up for our families to sign up for that. Also, a community communicators network, just wanting to hear from any member of the community that are stakeholders. If you may not be a parent, but you have some good information, that'd be good for my ears to support the work of the district. I'm all open for that. So please look out for that. Parent Advisory Committee, Community Stakeholder Network Group. Additionally, very excited in the month of August, my hope is to identify our two new students to be board, student board members. Excited about that. And that may be, may take place in September because we start sort of very end of August, we want to kind of get our feet rolling a little bit. Have our principal identify or maybe senior class advisor identify some of our young people that are gonna represent us well and we do the business on the board. So thank you so much.
And just to clarify, they have, they will be here with us. They will participate in discussion, but they don't have all the rights.
That is correct.
So they get to give their input, their insights, and they can encourage the way we vote based on what they say. They just don't have to be in the vote. So I think that's amazing and I'm very excited that you remembered to follow up on that and I didn't have to send you that.
Oh, no worries.
All right. So next we have board member announcements and comments. I'm gonna start with trustee, you can.
Okay, I would like to say good afternoon and I'm glad to be in person because I have trouble with my technology. And, and, and I'm, if I was the only one, it'd be different, but and as a board member, we, we are learning and we learn and grow. And to the board members, the ones that live in Benton Harbor, I, that's something that needs to be done. In the last, in less than three weeks, in that new school board, we've had our young men have been killed by each other. They had nothing to do and I was like, I'm gonna smile today. I didn't want no food. The young lady said, Mr. Towne, why don't you start your group back up? But I know that we, nobody's doing anything. That lady that, the boy that committed the murder, that's a family messed up. And the boy that died, that's another thing. So what, what I'm saying, but now we, we got the city commission, you got the municipal lines, you know, not blaming nobody. We got to do something. And if I had to go and stand alone, I'm gonna die. Some guy programmed as somebody who are building. So these kids, young men, we ain't got nothing to do. I don't got to do a shootout though. I mean, that was the boy that said to me, he had a gun on his side back then. And when he went in the store, he pulled his shirt over like that. So, so what we doing now? Let, let, let's get involved. Let's do it. I, I remember, it ain't been fifty years ago. I took a group kid in Chicago, all in love with the man. And then, and the man said, why do y'all so hot? So I told him, use your mouth. I'm not gonna speak for you. But we, nobody doing anything. I was in the Hyatt Project at a parade hall. I mean, I, I heard you so bad. This car, this boy, I seen it. Got killed in Baton Rouge, twenty-seven years ago. Just, just beginning to reach, right age. So we got the boys, schoolboys, girls, we got, we got, we got to go out in the highways and the eddies. Thank you.
Trustee Rock, that's mine.
I'd just like to thank everybody.
Yes.
I feel like we've got something accomplished. We've got some goals and, and something to look forward to and, and accomplishments that we can accomplish. So I'm, I'm just thanking everybody for this meeting. I'm thanking all of my colleagues for being here. And I look forward to continually working on the board and to do something.
One point of clarification, Liz, are we to return these folders to you?
No, no, that's yours.
We take them home? Cause we can't, I'm leaving. So I just wanna, I wasn't sure if you wanted her. So you want to leave your notepad, your board norms, and your folders? Yeah, and if there are any documents that you had that you needed to sign, you want to get those back. So you had it next time? Okay, we're gonna go through. You can take all of every day because of your board norms, your notebooks. All right, Secretary Tripple.
Okay, so we got our norms, our paths, and our folks. I'd like to take this opportunity to say to, to my colleagues, to the Board of Education, it's really good to see you all up close and in person. I was a little nervous about coming. Getting a little bit better with. Mr. Cannon, I did not talk to your comment. Thank you. But, you know, I, I, there's a lot of things, good things. And every time I think that this is upcoming in person, gives us an opportunity to get to see each other a little more unclose in person, develop a professional relationship with one another. I just got back from the Mayo Clinic today, earlier today. And I'm just so grateful, you know, for for life, you know, and, 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 and you know, as Mr. Cannon said, there's a lot of things that are happening in our community. For me, it's devastating because they were my students. I, when you, when you serve in administration or you serve in a classroom and, and, or you've been a class advisor, you know, I served as the class advisor for the class of nineteen ninety-four, class of two thousand, the class of two thousand three, class of two thousand one, or two thousand, oh, okay. Two thousand three, the class of two thousand seven, the class of two thousand ten, and the class of two thousand thirteen. And DeMarco was one of my students in the class of two thousand thirteen. And I'm sure that those people that were involved, I do not know at this particular time of day, she said, other family members. It just tears up two families. It also, it really affects our community. And our school district is a critical piece to all of this. Benton Harbor is a small place. It is not a large place. And the educational system must be up to par so that it can really, really honestly contribute to the citizenry here in Benton Harbor. I am very concerned, and I know when Dr. Townsley hears concerned, like I said, I'm very concerned. I am very concerned. I have seen people, when we didn't have anything, give their life for this district. And then when it's time for people to be blessed or, or, or moved up, I've just seen it repeatedly, somebody could come in and just crush it down. I am not a person that say that everybody that works in this community must be from this community. That's not education. That's not to lead you out. But I will not. I will not sit here and see what has been happening here in this school district to its employees and citizens of Benton Harbor. And those employees who have been faithful down through the years, I, 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 I can't do it anymore. I stayed here for six months. Part of the pedagogy, the pedagogy is to sit back, observe, and watch. I, I want to say to the superintendent that I support you. I want the best for you. I want you to be, to lead up to that next level. And I'm even. But it's going to be some adjustments, you know, it's, it's not, it's not easy. I, I, it, it kind of appears to me that oftentimes people, they're not accustomed to being asked questions. And just being in this room and seeing people's faces and asking in interactions is a completely different dynamic for me. To be able to see what it is that we're saying, because what we're saying, everything that I'm saying, none of it is personal. What I'm gonna do, on that note, I'm gonna close out my conference. And I want to thank you all for giving me an opportunity to serve on the Board of Education with each of you. Mr. Cannon.
Can we end? All right, I got you, I got you. Madam President, can you read the words?
So I would like, I would like, I would like to apologize to Secretary Tripple because I was confused as to why you was looking at Mr. Cannon so hard until I heard you talking. You can step out.
Turn the phone off.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna go next to Vice President Bradley. We're, we're so close to being done. Before Vice President Bradley goes. We're, we're so close to being done. Before Vice President Bradley goes, we might actually wanna leave our parliamentary procedure. And your folder too, your handout. You wanna leave this as well, so we have it, as a plan of reference. Okay, Vice President Bradley, you have the, well, actually, we'll go with Trustee Bowens, and then we'll work our way back up. Trustee Bowens?
Um, good evening, it was a pleasure to see you all. You all look beautiful. Um, you know, I just recently lost a classmate last week, um. And I wanna give honor to Tierra Whitfield and her family. My condolences go out to, um, her family. But I also wanna give honor to Donna Roseman. Donna was an activist in Benton Harbor, and she stood for what she believed in. And she recently passed away this morning, and my thoughts and prayers go out to their family and the Burton family. Um, it's so great to see that the governor signed the education budget where it will, if I'm correct, give equity and education funding. And it's a great step. You know, I'm here for one reason, that's to be a voice for the voiceless, be a champion for our children, and stand on what I believe is morally right. Um, I will not be silenced, I will not be bullied, and I will not be threatened. I would do whatever's necessary to protect my life, defend my life, and do whatever's I have to do. Um, so on that note, I just wanna say, I am excited. We talked about the education buildings and buildings, and you could see the passion and everything, and I think that same passion that we had, we can transform it to the community. But it's gonna take each and every one of us to go out in the community, to host virtual town halls, and engage the community and listen, and I think that will solve why parents send their kids to Lake Shore or Bering Springs or other schools. We have to realize, we have to compete on all levels. We have to compete in the academic level, but also in the facility, um, facility levels. One of the football, well, athletic people in the athletics department shared a Facebook post about a field. Um, I wanna say it was Muskegon, I could be wrong, how they redid it. And it's just nice if we can really show that we value our children's education, and we're investing in the children of Benton Harbor. Um, these are our future leaders that we are building up. So, we have to support the teachers and the leaders, and I will be a champion. And if you wanna see me get on your nerve, I will get on your nerves until we have an investigation done um, with the culture, and I would do, I will sound like a broken record or a CD on repeat until that's done, and that's it on my note. God bless you all, and God bless Benton Harbor.
Alright, Treasurer Creighton.
Good evening to me, everyone. No, but, um, I just want to, um, I had a lot of anxiety, uh, all day. Um, because, um, you know, this was our first meeting, um, in person, and um, I really didn't know what to expect as it pertains to how things will go. Um, but I'm very grateful that, um, I can say, you know, it was a four-hour meeting. I think that's pretty good for us. Um, you know, and, um, I'm sorry.
I said, and we don't have, this isn't the work session. You don't have to come again. Next week we can do another four hours.
Madam President, can we read our norms? But no, um, I appreciate the humor, honestly, um, that, you know, we came and we were able to, to, I was able to sit amongst two people, um, that I don't always see eye to eye on, and I just thank God for, you know, moments of being present in the moment. Um, I did finally give everyone their book, um, before agreement. Um, and, and, you know, in your leisure, I think those would be some good points that we can all take and use as we become better communicators. But as it pertains to our district, um, after seven months of being on the board, um, you know, I don't always know and, and really understand my purpose, um, and all that I do, but I'm very grateful for the opportunity. Um, I'm grateful, like, um, some of my colleagues explained, you know, we do receive phone calls and text messages and Facebook messages. And, you know, we can't ignore them. Um, I know that we have a policy that we must uphold. And so, you know, we did ask, as we were campaigning desperately for votes and support. Um, we used every method that we possibly could to reach voters, and so I think it's important, I know we walked through the housing complex and projects and, and grocery stores and magnets on cars and news ads, and so. Um, as we are moving forward in our business, I do think that there's an accountability piece that everyone, um, down this table has pretty much mentioned, and so I just kinda wanted to mention that. And also, um, I know at the beginning of my term, there was a really, really, um, good momentum with the alumni, Alumni Foundation of Benton Harbor and Benton Harbor Area Schools, and so I would just like for us, as we're thinking about, I've had some people reach out and say, you know, our building, our, uh, ceilings are leaking, or we could use some new paint, or we could use, I'm a first-year teacher, you know, we can use the bullet board supplies, and so it does take a village. I think that you can to mention that, and so, um, as we're moving forward, I think it's important to be creative, you know, in that, um, and think about some ways that we could, you know, without having, um, a whole lot of. Um, I think sometimes we think that, you know, I know the time is money, but I think some people have more time than they have money. Um, so we could pull together some resources and get some of these things done that won't necessarily take a lot of money, but just may take some time, and so, um, as we're thinking about creative ways as a board, um, to involve people. Um, we have to do that in the best way that we can, and so let's continue to include people, um, in the community. Um, you know, to do things and get things done, so I just kinda wanted to mention that, and also, I'm, I'm looking forward to um, learning more about some of the things that we've talked about as we're working on our strategic plan. And also, um, I would like to see some, some, some more effort and recruitment, um, of some Benton Harbor, um, alumni. Um, I, I was a class advisor, um, many of my students have graduated and gone on to college, and some of them are back, and so um, as we're putting that word out there, um, let's be open-minded to them and, um, figure out creative ways that we could bring some people back, and I think it'll stop some of the bleeding from an HR perspective.
Thank you, Treasurer Creighton. Vice President Bradley.
Alright, I'm gonna make mine really brief. First, I want to, um, thank everyone for coming out. You know, uh, and virtually, um, I wanna thank our administrators, superintendent, tech support, and, uh, Ms. Goodwin. Uh, thank you all for coming out, um, and my fellow board members, it's good to see y'all. Um, you know, we've had tragedy in our community, um, and it's just getting worse all over. I know, um, one of my pastors, uh, virtual pastor, I call him, was, uh, addressed, been talking about that subject here for the last, um, year or so, with the violence going up. Especially with his church being located in Chicago, and, um, but it's, some of this going on all over, so we gotta think about that. Let's also remember the, um, the country of Haiti, as they're going through transition, and, um, there's a lot of, uh, things behind what they're going through. Um, whoever did the, decided this board room setup, I wanna give them the props. I'm, I'm loving this. I know we, you had to do some stuff moving around and all that, but it's, it's very nice, um, open, and I like that, so kudos to you all. Thank you so much for that. Um, I'm glad to see that we're getting our student board members back involved. I know me and, um, Trustee Bowens, we were both, um, that's how we got our start doing this, um, and I remember I used to get in the board package, I'd come home after school, and there'd be a big old yellow envelope there with a whole bunch of information, so that was, um, awesome. Also, um, look forward to, um, you know, getting some things done and moving with that strategic plan and everything with M A S B. Um, and we talked about board stability. They do have a course coming up. I forgot to find it for them, but I need to talk to you too, Liz, about that. And it's talking about how board stability and student retention, so that's a good thing, because, um, I started, me and, uh, Mr. Buchanan, we both started at the same time, and, um, then we've had, we've been through some members, and then we, you know, some turnover, and so, um, we wanna do that. Uh, other than that, everybody stay encouraged, stay blessed, have a productive week. I'm just here for the night, I'll be back on the road in the morning, and that's it.
Alright, I'll keep my comments brief. I just wanna begin by thanking God for allowing our Boards of Education both for last year and this coming year to get through this season unharmed. We have made it through, we, we are thinking about coming back in person, but what we did not think about is each of the six months that each of us was able to make it through this pandemic and all of the year last year, that the Board of Education was able to make it through, uh, unharmed. So I just wanna thank God for protecting the Board of Education. We've come through, and we're back in person, so I'm so grateful to have this opportunity. I think it would be appropriate to say that we are much more respectful to each other in person. Um, and I hope that is something that will continue moving forward. Just throw that out there. I also want to commend administration for preparation of the room, because I came a little bit earlier than they told me to, just to make sure that things were ready and prepared for the war, and I was highly impressed. So thank you to everyone who put in all of the effort, not just today, but weeks planning, uh, Mr. Corson, I know that you worked, and your team working on making sure that we were able to do this live and, and allow our community to tune in. So I'm so very grateful for that. Um, I just wanna kinda reiterate some of the things that we've said. We love this district from the bottom of our heart, and it's a pride that is hard to explain, because you have so many people that count you out. Your fight is a little bit different, and what people don't realize is that Benton Harbor High School is the heart of this community. And so that is why so many of us are so protective of our district. And so there may be moments where it may seem, uh, personal, but it's not. It's just we are a board that is extremely invested in ensuring that we are part of the legacy that continues excellence for the district, and that we don't have any mistakes that we've overlooked, and so, um, I'm grateful for all effort given by the board, by our administrative team, our superintendent, all of the support by the community members that have endured this process with us and, and tuning in. Um, each month, and even tuning in now, we have, you know, people that are watching us live, so we're thankful for all of our community support. There was a topic that was, you know, brought up today as relates to our district and, um, harassment and people feeling comfortable, and I think everybody knows that I'm a person that is all about everybody feeling comfortable, and that's from the top down. I don't, um, condone harassment from the staff to other staff, harassment from the staff to the board, the board to each other on any level. It goes from the top down. And so I think that we all have a responsibility to ensure that we are modeling, um, what our expectations are as a district. And that we are keeping our policies and things in mind as we move forward in dealing with certain issues. But also making sure that we are listening to the community's needs, so it's a delicate balance that we have been charged to, um, carry out, but I know that we will get there, we will do it, so I'm thankful for all of your efforts. That was my best way, my best rally cry to try to pull everybody in this room together, and I hope it worked. I just wanna thank you all for a successful meeting tonight, and unless someone has any questions, I am going to adjourn.
So move.
Alright, so a motion has been made by Vice President Bradley that we adjourn, and their support. Support. Motion has been made by Vice President Bradley and supported by who supported Treasurer Creighton, that we adjourn. Any questions, comments to serve? Alright, Secretary Tripple. Oh, he didn't have anything on the agenda.
President Robinson?
Yes.
Vice President Bradley?
Yes.
Secretary Tripple, yes. Treasurer Creighton?
We need to cost their next five.
Yeah.
Trustee Bowens?
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan?
Yeah.
And Trustee Rocket Martin? Most care.
Alright, so I am going to try to continue to bring you guys some type of refreshment every month. That'll be my, my love.